Welcome to the November 3, 2025, regular meeting of the Goffstown Select Board. Just to let everybody know, we have one person on the phone this evening, Jim. And so we'll be doing roll call vote for everything. So you please join me on fudge of ladies.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first up is the public minutes for last meeting. We didn't have any non-public.
I will move acceptance of the 10/27/25 public minutes with corrections if need be.
Second.
Motion by Richard, seconded by Josh. Any discussion changes? Seeing none, call of our roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Myself as a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
That'll pass. We have a couple of announcements tonight. The first day to accept 2025, 26, I'm sorry, zoning petitions is November 10, 2025. The last day to accept zoning petitions is December 10, 2025. All petitions must be submitted during regular business hours and must be signed by at least 25 registered voters that reside in the town of Goffstown. Petitions may be turned in at the Select Board Administration Administration Office, located on the second floor of Town Hall at 16 Main Street, Goffstown, New Hampshire. Hours on Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. If you have any questions, see the Planning Department or call 603-497-8990, extension 117. We also have another announcement, which is kind of an important one. So this is a reminder to all the residents that town's winter parking ban will take effect on November 15 and will run through the winter months ending on April 15. The parking ban is in effect between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. And the Goffstown Police Department strictly enforces violations of overnight parking ban. If the weather conditions are favorable, written warnings may be issued during the first week of the ban. During snow removal operations, if a vehicle is parked so as to constitute a hazard, its removal may be requested by the Highway Department. In these instances, the Goffstown Police Department will investigate and make all reasonable attempts to locate the owner. But if the owner or operator is not located, the vehicle will be towed at the owner's expense. If you have any questions concerning the winter parking ban, please contact the Goffstown Police Department at 603-497-4858. That concludes that. Do we have anybody here for public comment? Seeing none. None will have the interim town clerk purchase recommended on purchasing ballot counting devices. We have this.
Does Jim need a soft copy of the supplement?
Yes.
It's okay. Jim, do you have access to your email?
Yeah.
Okay. Derek's gonna send you the supplement.
Okay, thanks.
So it's just an updated version?
Yes, right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got it.
You got it?
I got it, thanks.
Great. So with us tonight is Robin Perry, the stand-in town deputy town clerk.
No, I'm the interim, I'm not the...
Interim. Interim, there you go. Go right ahead with your presentation.
Okay. So, a little bit about this. We've had AccuVote for going on about 20 years. Ballot Law Commission decided that it was time for an update due to cybersecurity regulations. So in comes, we have two new ballot counting machines that have been approved. We have the Dominion system that was brought to us by the folks at LHS, and we have the Voting Works system. So Voting Works is the recommended choice that I have for this one. I'm gonna give you the comparison between the two, my recommendation and the pricing throughout this. The pros and cons. So Voting Works was designed from like the bottom up, based on cybersecurity. They were designed to pass the federal certifications. They started testing for the federal certification process, and they are on track to complete that at the end of this year, the beginning of next year. So they're doing really well with that. They have an open source code which allows for more transparency in the election, election process. Supplies can be purchased, like off the shelf, we can go to price match at Amazon or W.B. Mason. We're not tied to just one vendor. Lot of folks have started using them, have had really good results, like the system. Cons is it's new to the market, it hasn't been tested, like for years, the way the LHS system has. These are the towns that are currently using it, ones that are close to us, Bedford has it, they really like it. Conway's been using it for years, three or four years. They are on the old system. If we were to get this one, we would be on the new V4 system. Rye is currently using it, Portsmouth is using it, Keane just ran, is running their elections tomorrow on it.
So those are all people that you spoke to, Robin, or...
Yeah, there are ones that I spoke to up at the clerks' meeting this past week. So Dominion is the system that would be the other option that we have. So they're a new product. It's not the same as that AccuVote system that we'd been currently using for years. We often talk about LHS, but they're technically the reseller for Dominion. They support the product, but they're not the manufacturer. So the positives are that, you know, they have the same great support that we're accustomed to having from AccuVote. Dominion products have been in the market for years. They have experience going through the certification because they did one of those certifications already. Milford has used them. The cons are you are stuck with the prices and costs that they have, getting the products from them. Some of their pricing is pretty high because we pay on a per-election for, for programming. So it gets a little high in the maintenance. They've had some vulnerabilities. They were just acquired by another company, so we're not sure if that same support level is gonna be there. Let's see, these are the towns that are currently using Dominion and have like gone to this system versus the Voting Works one. I talked to many of these towns as well. They're also happy with their choices. Derry would be the closest town that's pleased with them, that's similar to size as us. I, you know, I chatted with, I went and visited Manchester and watched them do one of their demos when they were getting ready for some of their pre-election prep. Because I wasn't, I did get to have the folks at Voting Works come in here and do a demo for as much of the folks that could come in and visit with us and participate in the demo. LHS was not able to come in and do a demo for us. They were able to let me come into their offices down in Salem, and they helped me connect with Manchester for their pre-election prep to let me go over and kind of watch what they were doing and participate over there, so I at least got a feel for the differences between the two products. And for the most part, the everyday, like, you know, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., it's pretty similar. There's some, a couple of nuances that are a little different. The main part that's gonna be different is that adjudication piece at the end of the night. That's gonna be really amazingly different for us.
On which system?
On if we went with the Voting Works system. Voting Works has that as part of their system, whereas Dominion charges an additional $5,000 to get that adjudication piece that we currently use spreadsheets and extra manpower to try and create these spreadsheets that they charge the additional fee for.
Just your quick question. Well, I'm looking up there, I see a Ponya Sex, 113, that's the number of machines they have?
That's the number of wards they have.
Wards?
For their different voting places.
So how many, we have two wards, so how many machines would we be getting?
We would have the same five.
Five?
Yeah. So we usually have two down in Bartlett and then the three up here.
Three up here, okay.
So this is our product comparison. And as you can see here, it is, a lot of it is fairly similar. So the life expectancy of a Dominion machine is 10 years, and that's based on their AccuVote systems that, you know, we've had for 20 years. So they're planning these next generation machines to last at least that long. Voting Works, they're planning them to last at least five to 10 years, but they haven't been around that long, so this is what their estimation is. They're already in the testing stage of their certification, whereas Dominion is still in the planning stages. So they're, they have to meet that December 26 deadline that the state has set, so they're not quite at the same space. But you'll see where one, you can buy products off the shelf, the other one, you have to get the products from Dominion.
My understanding is AccuVote is made by Diebold, it's not the same company as Dominion, correct? Because you said it's like AccuVote, but I don't think Dominion and AccuVote, like, or Diebold are the same. I think it's a completely different product.
It is.
So what are some of the main things you're saying about Voting Works or Dominion that you like better, and why you're saying Voting Works?
So for Voting Works, I really liked the adjudication portion of the end of night, so it makes it easier when we are trying to do that count at the end of the evening, rather than have it be so challenging with your feet and feet and feet of this strips of tape. These come out in eight and a half by 11 sheets with counts, so it makes it a little bit easier.
I know that Mark and I came and looked at this for Voting Works, because we didn't get a chance to look at Dominion, because LHS did not come in. But it did seem like the machines for Voting Works were much lighter, like you could tear them apart and compact them, so it wouldn't be as impactful on DPW, in my opinion, to take and move some of those around.
No, so the, the actual physical ballot counting machine, the one from Dominion weighs around 70 pounds. They do stack and nest inside each other, so you can fit two or three of them inside each other. The ones from Voting Works collapse, and they have no mechanical pieces inside, so they will store in our trailer, so they can store outside. The ones from Dominion have mechanical pieces, so they can't store outside because they have technical parts that are sensitive to temperature.
Not sure if you guys know, we bought a trailer just to store the voting equipment, voting booths.
Yeah, so there is that portion, because I know we do have machines that are sitting here, because they can't be stored in the trailer. So that was a really nice feature, that they would be able to physically be stored elsewhere and clear up some space in this building. So I did like that. So let's look at prices. So prices are a little bit higher on the Dominion. We do have the grant that's coming in. So we have a, what's called a, the Vax Admin, which is the part that gives us the printer, the scanner, and all that little extra, the scanner portion that comes with Voting Works that we didn't have with Dominion, because that's all-inclusive, that's part of the $7,000. And then there's this printer that comes with it, so it ends up sort of almost washing price-wise in that. But then you have that whole adjudication piece, that's an additional $5,000 if we want that from Dominion, that is included in Voting Works. So they're fairly close in pricing, but you, I, to me, it feels like you get a little more bang for your buck with the Voting Works system.
What's in the budget?
So there's $35,000 in CIP for the purchase. We also had budgeted $10,000 for purchase of the ADA tabulators, which we no longer have to purchase, so those are also funds that are available for this.
Was that also in CIP?
That was actually in Elections, because it fell under the $25,000 threshold. So we have a total of $45,000 in this year's budget.
And our cost would be $15,000 if we go with those Voting Works. Is that correct?
That's just for the product?
Yes.
Because I see on the next slide you have something about maintenance as well.
Right, so then we go for the product cost for years one to five. So we still have maintenance that we have to pay on them. And Voting Works starts in year one, Dominion starts in year after, like the maintenance is included in the first year. But then Dominion charges on a per-election programming, whereas we only have to pay to create the ballots in the software, and it's only on our local elections. And it's $500 per ballot, so for town and for school ballot, it's $500, so $1,000 for our normal March election. And then we don't pay anything for the state primary and the state general in November and September.
And that's $17,500 per year?
No.
That's times, that's over five years.
Okay. How would you do that, Derek?
So we already budgeted for maintenance costs. We, there might be a slight adjustment to the proposed budget under Elections, but we already budgeted maintenance expense, as well as currently, LHS does the programming of the AccuVote cards for every election as well.
Which it looks like it's included in here, in this cost, or this, right now. So LHS and Dominion would be about $28,000 over five years versus 17.5?
Right, because they pay on a per-election, we have to pay to maintain for every election with LHS, Dominion, unfortunately, whereas we're just paying when we create ballots with the other one.
So would you budget 3,500 a year in magnets, is that what you would do? 17.5 over three years.
Well, you would have, you would have the $500 per unit times, instead of five years, one year and five units. So yeah, 2,500 for maintenance, and then we'd have to do whatever we have, we should only have the one election a year. I think when Voting Works did their demonstration, we'd be doing the town and school as one...
So that would be $1,000, that's 500 for each.
So that'd be $1,000 for each, so...
Well, I think a question I'd get at the 17.5 would be spread out over the five years.
Spread out over five years. And though, I assume like, because it says, well, it says on one to the right, 12 elections or whatever, here it says five local elections. So we're paying more because we're having to do each election through LHS and Dominion, like we're paying them for each election?
Yes. It's how they spread out the cost for their licensing.
Do we need to make a motion to support this?
Do you have additional slides? Because this is your, your updated slide presentation.
I do, but do we need to motion on this before my other slides, or do you have the rest of it?
Oh, okay, that's all you had related to this.
To this one, yes.
Okay. So you wanted to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to support the interim town clerk in the purchase of Voting Works.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Motion by Josh, seconded by Richard, just like again, this is a roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Myself as a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Richard, your motion carries. Robert, did you have something else?
I do. So I would like to visit the idea of poll pads or e-poll books.
Is there another slide, or...
Probably a couple of years ago, they had been discussed. They have come quite a ways in their use in the town. I believe there's 57 towns that are currently using them in New Hampshire.
Why don't you explain to us what that is?
So what a poll pad or an e-poll book is, is a, the poll pad specifically is like an iPad that will assist with checking in, and it's in any line, anytime. So there's no more finding your A through C, D through F, looking for the line. It's, you can go to whichever line has no line, to help assist with a smoother check-in experience for our voters when they're coming in, and it helps with the reconciliations at night, because it can produce at any point a marked checkbook to help us balance with our numbers at the end of the night, to make sure that we instantly balance with who came in to what our, our ballot counting machine said came through.
How many of these would you need?
So they recommend one per thousand voters, so I estimated 12. If we wanted to start out less than that, based on the costs, we could, if we want to try for 10, but I based everything based on 12.
Do you use these to register new voters too, or...
You can use them to register new voters, you could dedicate one to just absentee ballot for when we have that influx of absentee ballots that we're just doing, starting at 11:00 a.m. or 1:00 p.m., and just have them run all of our absentee ballots on one poll pad to get through them. So you can utilize them however you need to, to try and get through your lines and manage lines during the heavy flow periods.
How many tables do we have now at each location, Derek?
We usually run six on a normal town election in Ward One and four on a normal town election at Bartlett. And then when you have a bigger election, like a primary or the general, like November, it was 10 for Ward One and I believe six for Bartlett. And that's in addition to all the supervisors that had theirs. And the supervisors would still continue to register their new voters, and then those new voters would take their information over, and then there, we can have just dedicated folks who do, anyone who's ADA and new voters, and have them specifically trained on just that, and help push those lines through.
What's the cost of these?
The cost of these is... So product price, so it's pretty close to the same. So it's $19.50 per unit for Voting Works, and the No Ink, which is the LHS version, is $18.50. The biggest difference between the two of them is the LHS No Ink version is a Wi-Fi enabled, because it is on an iPad. And then Voting Works is completely not on any, it's not on Internet at all. So I know a lot of folks have issues with the fact that they want zero connection to Internet, so both of them have, you know, great, you know, I can, for the comparison, they like, they have, you know, they both produce the paper date, up-to-date paper checklist at any time that you can print off of both of them. I will tell you that it's 25 seconds on the e-poll books, and it's about 15 seconds on the poll pads from LHS. It's a 10-second difference. So at this point, the cost is about a little over $1,000 difference. It's a 10-second difference in time, but for the experience of the voter, the lines that we would mitigate, and the end-of-the-night reconciliation, I think that this is one of those things where if we have the money now, it would be a really great way to start moving ourselves into the next level to help our, our elections.
This would improve the overall voter experience?
100%.
And...
That's not necessarily true, because dealing with the people that, who would be using these pads is gonna make the difference. And a lot of these people, I know in Parado, especially, we use a lot of the older people who may have a hard time with this and would slow things down. I think that, if, I can't remember the reason why we didn't go with it last time, but it was something like, we were worried about the people having to stand in line and wait while somebody figured out how to use it.
Which towns are using these now, that you know of already?
There's no non-customer, no customers.
Yeah, for Voting Works. But if you go to, it looks like the No Ink, it says that it's, it's already being used.
So in your packet, you have a list of towns on the column on the right. It has all the towns and counties in New Hampshire. So Derry went on the November election, they had a 21-minute line for pushing through the presidential election.
What was our line like?
Very little, we don't have much.
I don't recall what it was. Normally, you'd look at your highest traveled morning commuters in the afternoon, but I don't, I don't know that we have that information.
I know, I know London area was around three hours.
And how does...
That's my concern, is the wait time.
It's a valid concern.
Yeah, so is, like, I mean, I'm looking at a picture of this, does it look like it scans the ID?
So yes, they traditionally will, both of them will scan a license, and that's where it pulls the information from. On any other acceptable ID, you have to manually key it in. So if we use a passport, a military ID, student ID, that information would be keyed in.
So it eliminates human error?
That's the idea.
Have we had a lot of human error?
I don't know.
Writing can be atrocious, speaking as a supervisor of the checklist, it is a nightmare.
As somebody who has helped the supervisor of the checklist count at the end of the night, there is a lot of confusion, because some people will put a check mark in the box but not cross out the, the name, so it's, takes us a long time. We have to go page by page and count, physically count up all the ones, and then we add those up and give those to match out the number of ballots given out.
So that would eliminate this, just would eliminate that?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Do you figure, though, that the 12 devices is gonna carry the load of those 16 lines that you said that we have at November general elections?
I think it can.
Okay.
I think, I think we would have to, I think ideally, we would try it in a non-presidential election type year, when we generally don't have an 80% voter turnout.
Sure.
When we have time to decide if this is enough, or if we need to consider whether we need to add to our budget and think about whether we need more. But ideally, if you're getting folks through in lines in 15 to 25 seconds, yes, it should be.
Okay.
Do you need dedicated ones to the, like, the supervisor or checklist area, or are you still using the same standard way to enter people into the system?
The supervisors would still be registering their new voters their way.
Using the existing software that we have?
For what they have, yes.
Okay. This has no tie-in to the... Okay. This has no tie-in to the voting, the tabulators, correct? Because tabulators separate it from themselves, so you don't have to get tied to one vendor or another?
Nope. And so we can go with Voting Works for the machine that we use and we can go with the No Ink by LHS as the support and/or vice versa. Like you can, they're interchangeable.
Well, I just have some experience with it and Voting Works doesn't, that's the concern, you know, you have when you bring in somebody new on board, that you're going to be their guinea pig to learn.
I don't want to be their guinea pig.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And I think since these ones are, these pole pads, I mean, they come in a cool-looking case, it looks like, but they're also iPads, so I assume if somebody knows how to use an iPad, they should be able to figure this out.
I'm going to ask Rodney if he's got any input. He's raised his hand a couple of times.
Well, I didn't raise it real high, but...
Rodney, you mind coming up to the table and just identifying yourself for the people? I don't want...
Is this good enough right here?
Thank you.
Rod Stark, town moderator, and I'm all in favor of getting this, but when, when the, when the whole idea of these poll books first was introduced, Dave Scanlon set up a study committee and, and he put me on that committee. So he listened to a lot of experts in the field and everything. And the one, the one, the most important thing I took away from it is keeping away from the Internet at all costs, okay? So I forget which one is which, but...
Voting Works, the e-pole books, is the one that has no Internet connection.
Then that, then, then, without question, that would be my favorite. You know, everything else being equal, so to speak, keep away from the Internet. That's what we were told. Now, I think you said that a number of towns are using the other one already. So something must have satisfied Scanlon's office or the ballot law commission. No, not the ballot, they're not involved in this. But Scanlon must be satisfied that it's okay. I'm not, okay? That's my...
You were on the committee. I mean, you, you had some experience with checking them out.
No, he brought in all experts from all over and they testified about, about the dangers. And, and I, I can understand that. I mean, you don't want to get involved with the Internet. Let's keep it just local.
That was my question too, because I know how spotty the Internet is at the high school. We've had issues with the Internet up there, so...
You never know what's, where it's going to go once it gets into the Internet.
Is it a cybersecurity concern, or is it because of, like, connectivity and resiliency to keep the system running?
No, the former.
Okay. As a cybersecurity expert myself, it does say that it's the first-in-the-nation electronic council certified poll book. So I am not sure that the other system even has that certification so far. This one has a certification and has undergone some cybersecurity validation.
I don't think it has, because it's not Internet. It does not connect.
You mean the Voting Works one?
The Voting Works does not connect.
They still would have to go through certification, because the tabulators had to go through certification. I would think.
Do we need to make this decision on the way?
No, but I think if you're going to make this decision, you would want to make it with sufficient time so that we can order them, purchase them, have them in hand, so we can also train our table, our, our poll workers are going to be at the tables on how to use these. Because ideally, you'd want to use these in the March town election, the state primary before you roll these out to a general election. You'd want a couple of smaller elections under your belt before.
When's our next meeting?
Uh, next week.
Next week. What do we need to answer if we need to, like, hold it over?
We're concerned about the Internet. And if we're not going to do, we don't want to be on the Internet, as Rodney suggested, then we'll go with another company that has no experience.
Okay, a couple of things...
No feedback.
Yeah, a couple of things to keep in consideration as we bring up Internet. My understanding is that the current supervisor checklist system still requires the Internet of some sort be able to connect and register voters, correct?
Yes, so the supervisors are using, they're using laptops and they're using the state voting or voter checklist software, so they are logging into that.
Over Wi-Fi.
Over Wi-Fi, which is secure. It is, it's a secured Wi-Fi that the, that the high school maintains. But they are, they're logging in and they're entering new voters into that system throughout the day.
Same thing about it?
And, and this would also require the same Wi-Fi?
Yes.
So if you're already concerned about Wi-Fi, then you shut off all the supervisor checklist systems too?
Well, I think, I think it's a little different than what Rodney, that this is from what the supervisors are doing.
Well, if you've already got, if, if, if the Internet is already in the system, don't expand it. Don't make it worse.
I'm not sure you're making it worse, because you're doing it from this one system. So if this system gets compromised, that means the entire company has to be compromised.
You're talking about which one?
I'm talking about the, the, the pole pad from No Ink, the LHS is supporting. My question would be, for Voting Works, since it quote-unquote "does not have Internet access", how does the data get transferred from this system that's sitting on each one of the stations for us to be able to update the checklist?
I don't quite know.
So I think that's something we have to say. I know that they say no Internet, which is, you know, great to say no Internet.
How does it talk to everything else? How does it, yeah, communicate?
How do you get it updated? Are we going to end up causing more problems trying to get that, you know, moved over from one place to another? Because...
Do you have any idea? No?
I do, I do not, but I think that's a good question, that we can find out answers on how, how they update throughout the day and how they compile all the information at the end of the night.
I think that's...
Because we did get a demonstration on the ballot counting devices, but this is a little bit different.
Things like that, it looks like, because it's, it's little pieces.
Is that like when you go, you put your credit card up to the thing and put your driver's license up there? Does that work that?
I'm not sure that they, they have that level of sophistication looking at this product.
So both of them, you would, sort of like when you check in someplace or when you go and, like, you scan your card at, like, Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts and they, you put your card up and they, boop, and they scan it, just like that? It's the same scanning system where they scan it, except it's your license versus your rewards card.
And what's the printer, what's the paper printout that comes out for? What is that for?
You turn that into the ballot clerk to get your ballot, if you want, if we choose to have them do that. If we don't have the ballot clerk with the actual device.
So you don't go through the A through Z line, you just walk up there, put your card up there?
Yeah, there is no A to Z line anymore.
Exactly.
You basically eliminate all of that.
Yeah, you just put your card up there, get your slip, go get your ballot.
You know, we sometimes, like, redirect people to certain places, try to get them. Now, basically, anybody can go to the shortest line. I'm all for the pole pads. I'm not as concerned about the Wi-Fi on this, because we already have Wi-Fi access on some of our systems today.
I'm not in Bartlett. I, I've never sat in Bartlett when I was a supervisor. I don't know how their Wi-Fi is.
I'm sure it's a, I don't know, we don't usually use it there, because they bring everything to the...
No, the supervisors of the checklist.
Supervisors do, but I mean, other than that, the rest of it goes to you or down to the town, down to...
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Any, any manual spreadsheets at the end of the night are through the town.
I assume we could get with IT for the schools and get the same access level.
There needs to be coordination. I think the first couple of elections, we'd probably have a higher impact on our IT staff, but once you work it out a couple of times...
My largest concern would be the contingency plan if the network went down. Meaning, if the network goes down and you don't have access and it's not updating those sheets, does it stay residual inside of the pole pad until you get network connectivity back? That's my largest concern.
Okay, I'd like to get more information, especially on the Voting Works one. It says it's got a, it's printed up-to-date paper checklist at any time and switch to backup in minutes to minimize downtime, no matter what the cause. So the paper backup goes where? I mean, I, I, like you said, how does it communicate with everybody else?
Yeah, and how do you, I mean, that's the biggest thing.
I think this is just, this is just, it counts the amount of ballots that you get versus what you used.
This is the checklist. This is the, instead of somebody flipping through a binder to find your name and address. With a ruler, yeah.
And, and like, making a mistake, maybe even get on the wrong line, this validates it with the ID instantaneously says you are who you are.
So we have a number of people in town that have the same name. So it's great, because it pops up the name and you have to double-check the birthdate and everything to verify that you are checking the right person, rather than us at the end of the night going, oh, I didn't see that person come in when we checked and we realized that they checked dad instead of...
Does it use the barcode off the back of your license, you know? That's what operates off the barcode. And if they just have a, a card, an ID card, is there...
Like their passport or whatever? Then you would manually put in their name and their address.
Where?
In the iPad, it would have fields that you start putting in and then it would start pulling from your voter record, like our, our checklist, our digital checklist. And it would start filling in that and pull up their voter number, their address, their name. And if there were multiple with that name, you would then have to verify which one has that correct information with the birthday that matches the ID of whomever is in front of you.
And a poll worker would need to do that?
Correct. The, the normal ballot clerk that's sitting there, the poll worker that's sitting there at that table.
Well, it's two things. You're talking about the system goes down.
Yeah.
What do we do? But Voting Works doesn't use the system. Doesn't use the Internet.
It doesn't use the Internet. So it obviously has to pull down the entire checklist for everybody to begin with.
So I think a lot of these answers would be in the state's elections procedure manual. It's a thousand-page. I think we can go to that manual and probably pull some of those answers for you and bring them back to you.
We're going to work on this Monday. We'll push it off to Monday.
I, I think all the systems would have to be connected, even for the Voting Works system. So I think we need to validate, does the pole pad really use the Internet or does it actually share stuff amongst each other?
Okay.
And I think the same thing for Voting Works, because if every single system, for instance, and this is thinking through a cybersecurity standpoint, if every single system had a copy of the checklist but they didn't share information, it means you could go to every system. So I don't think that that's the case. I think...
Some Bluetooth or something.
It would have to have some sort of connectivity amongst all of them. So we just need validation of that.
So I'm sure we can get that information. I know, Robin, you didn't necessarily have availability next week, but I think we can pull that information forward and bring that to the board next week.
Well, as long as you have the information, you and Robin can work together. You get the information and we can make a decision.
Yeah.
All right.
Cool, so...
Thank you, Robin.
Thanks, Rod.
Thank you.
Thanks for your input, Rodney.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Rodney.
Do you have a couple of things in the town administrator report?
Yes, at tab 5, I do have a consent agenda with just employee status reports. We have a full-time police officer that successfully completed probationary period and also has a military pay incentive, per the language of the CBA. There's also another full-time police officer with a successful completion of probationary period and then a DPW seasonal laborer. This is an end-of-season separation.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Motion by Josh, seconded by Richard. It's a roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Myself as a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Next.
So next, we have some additional information on the on-call stipends. And what you have is a revised potential budget impacts. So there are, have been some changes proposed. One of the changes in the police department was to pull off the communications division and also make a slight change to the daily stipend amount of the on-call detective, because they are in a rotation and because the union detectives already receive a hourly stipend, it'd be for approximately one-third of the year. And then information technology department, again, I did hear last week that the board would prefer to keep these as weekly, but what we've done is done them as daily amounts. That way, if somebody had some type of, they had to trade off for some reason, we'd be able to calculate it on a daily amount. But this is, again, a revised daily stipend amount.
Questions? Go ahead.
Why is DPW different than the bottom two?
So what we did for DPW is we took an average of what DPW had received during the winter on-call periods for the past two winters to come up with those amounts. Those were what the, the average amounts were.
I, I get that, and I think those were voted in year after year, but now we're trying to standardize everything. I think this should be standardized across the board.
But DPW runs, doesn't run all year round.
I understand they don't run all year round. It also means that they're not on-call all year round.
Right, that's what I'm saying. They don't run, they don't run the on-call all year round.
But they...
So it's going to be different.
Well, I don't know if the on-call pay, which is supposed to be a fixed amount, should be different. They are getting paid extra when they get called in to come in and work as well. This is solely so that way they answer the phone, correct?
And as well as the restrictions, it would have to be within a location, yes.
What was the, the daily stipend last year? Was it the same?
No, we didn't do a fixed daily stipend. What we did was during the weekday, each employee would get one and a half hours at time and a half rate. So it varied amongst all the individuals that received it. Three hours on the weekend and then six hours at the time and a half rate. So that's why I say that is an average, because you had some that were making more and some that were making a little bit less.
Yeah. My personal opinion is, looking at this, it says, what DPW is more important than our police department and our IT department? I'm just, that's what it says to me when I look at it.
I think it's a different situation. I, I not necessarily agree with the amounts.
All right.
Especially the daily amounts for DPW seem high to me. Just because it's going to get, somebody's going to get $100 a day.
And, and why is the shop supervisor lower than the on-call supervisor rotation? That doesn't make any sense to me either.
Because this on-call shop supervisor has, is more frequently. They, they may not get called out for every event, but they are, they have that restriction much more frequently. And maybe we've got both the police chief and DPW director here, but...
Sure, let's, let's hear it out.
Let's start with DPW.
No, that's, that's...
That's Derek Smiles. You can play with it however you want.
Okay, thanks for, thanks for helping me out. So just a, the, the quick flashback of how we arrived at the amounts we did two years ago for DPW. Basically took a, a survey of multiple cities, towns in New Hampshire, state of New Hampshire in the public works realm. So we were trying to say, okay, what is the, what's a common amount? And admittedly, it varies pretty significantly from one town to another, some depending on how new their, you know, if it was a unionized agreement or how, how more recently for the state of New Hampshire, their, you know, personnel plans were updated, whatever. But we found, you know, hour and a half, a time and a half for a weeknight was, was not outside the realm. Some towns, you know, as little as $10 a day. But then there's whole, I can provide the info if you really want the, the updated versions, but a lot of variance, as you might expect. Some do a flat stipend, $2,500 was one example for the whole winter for all the employees that might be subject to that. Anyway, so we called that data and made a recommendation. That's what the board went with. So I think the primary focus for me, coming into this winter, was to make sure we're not, as, you know, the board has set a standard. as, you know, the board has set a standard the past couple of winters, that's going to be seen as a, as a step backwards for the employees that have been affected. As to why potentially the public works versus other departments, the nature of the on-call is, is pretty varied. Very rarely does DPW pick up a phone and that's it. So, our on-call supervisors are tasked with more responsibility and more requirements on those subsequent call-ins, which is how federally Department of Labor looks at whether or not you should be paying people hour for hour when they're in standby status versus maybe not, and that's one of those determining factors. So, that's how we came a couple of years ago to the amounts we did, was the expectations of, the frequency of, and the fact that you can't remote in a tree down, an accident, you know, that kind of stuff. Yes, as you've mentioned a few times, we are paying hour for hour when they come in as legally required, but that's a baseline. We have to do that so that really doesn't factor into the on-call piece of it. The, the on-call pay is both for a, the responsibility, so we're pegging that responsibility, and the known situation that you almost are 100% likely to have to then get in your vehicle and travel from wherever you are to town to goffstown to go out in that inclement weather, whether it's a holiday or whatever, versus, you know, the ability for IT, maybe it can just remote in and answer a question, pick up that phone and answer the question, hey, did you turn it off and turn it back on? I don't want to minimize IT's work. Of course, there's those big, big, you know, the server room flooded, that kind of stuff happens, but, and, and, you know, I'm sure the chief could speak to PD's, you know, likelihood of the call-in. For, for DPW, this is our first line of defense. For some of the other departments, that may be a second or a third tier call that's coming in that now, okay, we haven't been able to handle that with our on-shift folks. This is a question to bring up, you know, ratchet up. And then I think to the last question for me anyway, for our on-call supervisor for the winter, storm supervisory rotation with the on-call shop supervisor, the shop supervisor, that was an issue the select board struggled with a bit a couple of years ago, as Peter mentioned. Technically, this is a one-of-one role for our department. This person is on-call every day for, in, in a similar fashion, I think, to the IT and to the, maybe the PD's situation, probably closer to IT where they're one-of-one and they could get called in if the fuel pumps are down or if the fire department has an ambulance that's out of service. They need to come in and, and it may not be storm-related.
Which person was that, Adam?
For the shop supervisor.
So, the bottom one?
Yep. Uh, yes, yeah, for, yeah, for me. And so, the fact that they're on-call consistently, they also have a second-tier level of responsibility where they might be one of the folks that gets called in by the storm supervisor if it's a big enough event that's gonna require equipment maintenance. Usually what, we kind of draw that line around a, a plowable event. So, the shop supervisor may not be coming in. This is our only non-union on-call person that's not in the on-call rotation otherwise. They might get a call for a plowable event but not for assault treatment event, for example.
So, your shop supervisor's always on-call?
Unfortunately, yes.
And, and yet they're lower?
They are because...
That makes no sense to me.
Well, the frequency, as I mentioned earlier, the biggest consideration is the frequency of calls, the expectations of what, you know, responsibilities for when you actually do get a call, and for them, the frequency of calls is a lot less. So, that, back to that whole DOL breakdown of how they decide what, what on-call or what standby functions are more valuable or more closer to that hour-for-hour pay requirement.
Josh, if I'm reading this right, there's one person for that, right?
I'm sorry?
Shop supervisor is the only one?
Yes.
He gets it all?
Yes.
Okay. So, he's gonna get an extra hundred and sixty or a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty bucks a week, period, for the whole, for that period? That's like a raise for that time. How does he handle it when he has to go out or do something?
So, if he is, it's happened a couple of times, if he's down hard with illness or if he's gotta go outside our, our radius, he just doesn't get paid for those days. The board wanted to treat his as a monthly look versus the others which were...
And who covers for him?
There's really limited coverage when he's out. So, there are, you know, our fleet operations manager, former shop supervisor, so he would be the next person to call, so that would be the name that PD would have, but he's already in the on-call storm rotation, so...
And the reason they would call him is if something broke down?
Breakdowns, PD fire breakdowns, DPW breakdowns, or...
So, he's gotta come in?
Or fuel pumps.
Not necessarily. Let me finish.
Yeah.
Okay, so, a breakdown happens, why can't the on-call supervisor call a mechanic who can come in instead of having to call the supervisor and then the supervisor turns her on and calls a mechanic?
So, this position, most of them are, is a working foreman, so chances are unless it's multiple pieces of equipment, he may not need another mechanic, he's a mechanic himself, so usually it'll be a, you know, okay, the fuel pumps are down, he'll come in and troubleshoot. That's not normally something our mechanics would be working on outside the basic troubleshooting stuff. But if, you know, in a case where he may have to transport a piece of fire apparatus but fire doesn't have somebody to go with to bring that to somewhere, maybe he would call a mechanic in. But the majority of the time, because it's in the winter period, they're kind of coincidental. So, the, so like I said, he doesn't get called in all that often for the other things. It's mainly, okay, we're going to a plowing event. We know trucks break down, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's usually when he'll, he'll be responding for those, for the actual plowing events.
I'm, I'm, Peter, I think that confused me even more. So, who's, who's in the winter on-call supervisor rotation?
So, we've got our highway foreman, our highway superintendent, rather, our solid waste foreman, our cemetery foreman, fleet and operations manager, and dun, 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 dun. I'm forgetting. Oh, and assistant public works director. Thank you.
So, you got five people?
Yep.
And they're rotating every day?
Yes. Every day during the week and then whoever has it for the weekend has it for the weekend.
That doesn't mean one of the guys can't do it three, four days in a row. I mean, you know?
Right, right.
But they just, it's done on a daily basis, figured on.
Yep. Okay, and so, when a call comes in, what are the typical calls that are coming in on average?
So, during this time of year, vast majority are winter-related. So, it's either a melt, refreeze type event, you know, sleet, freezing rain, roads are getting slippery, accident call-in, maybe roads closed, trees down, power lines down, need road closures, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
And then, you know, obviously a full-blown blizzard, a plow type situation.
They get called, does that mean they're automatically going there or they're calling somebody else to come in?
Nine times out of 10, it's to the degree where they're coming in, maybe even more than nine times out of 10. So, the, that foreman will come in if it was, you know, there's, there's always a situation, but let's say it was a winter storm where we knew it was probably gonna hit, high likelihood of, of coming in overnight at some point, but it wasn't clear what time that was gonna happen. In that case, and if we, bless you, as good as the weather forecast can be, if we knew it was gonna be a 24-hour, 36-hour event...
So, they come in?
They'll come in normally, but in that case where you've anticipated an extended event, they'll probably start making calls immediately, right? Hey, yeah, come in, I'm gonna, it's primary plow roots, hey, we're gonna start treating any roads if it's already coming down at this point. So, there'll be a limited call-in, and then their judgment as to when that is going to turn into an all-call event for all DPW based on what we see...
So, what happens with all DPW? Let's say everybody gets called in now. What happens then?
Everybody gets called in.
Do they get paid?
Meaning what?
Do they get paid for being called in?
Everybody that's working gets paid for working, yes.
They don't get on-call pay?
Yeah, they just get hourly pay.
Yeah, but that's in the union contract. I mean, that's the way, in the contract way. My question is, let's say if the, there's a tree down, does the on-call person, whether it's the assistant DPW director or the cemetery person or whoever, go out and take care of that?
Yes.
Themselves?
Fairly often. Obviously, depending on the size and the complexity.
Right.
If it's a, if there's already an accident or something and there's road closures, that might need multiple things set up at, you know, in, you know, two miles apart, different intersections, stuff like that, they might call somebody in, but a lot of the time it's, you know, something like that.
You would never have two people on-call, two on-call people on at the same time?
None from the rotation. The shop supervisors.
I'm saying to bring somebody in to help them out, like...
Correct. If they're gonna call anybody, they will call a, a union employee usually at that point.
Okay.
If they need help.
Okay, and they get paid an hourly wage to come out to do that?
Yes. I mean, talking about when they're actually working, yes.
They don't get an on-call pay?
Correct, right.
Correct.
Okay. And the shop supervisor, they get called. It's solely to like go to the shop? Do they fix things or do they call in mechanics?
Both. Similarly, if they can fix it, if they can handle it themselves, that's the expectation. If it's a bigger thing, you know, where, like I said, it was a transmission blown on a, you know, plow truck or something and you're gonna need help, but, you know, it's, each, each case is a little different, but the expectation is for all the supervisors, if they can handle it themselves, they do.
So, question, the people that are on-call that have to travel in, do they get paid mileage or anything like that when they get called in?
No, currently.
Okay. They're coming in in winter times. It's gonna be icy, I get that. It still doesn't answer the question, why is the winter on-call supervisor more than that of the winter on-call shop supervisor if they're still getting on-call? It doesn't make any sense to me. They're both having to come in and risk safety to get there, so I don't understand that.
This is back to the, to the expectations of the call and the frequency of calls and the, the load of, of, of the call. So, shop supervisor gets a call, they can't expect it to be half a day, a full day, a day and a half, that they're gonna be the ones that are gonna be running this, you know, event. Whereas for the winter on-call, for the storm on-call folks, that can be the case. They can be on-call and get called out four times in one night. It can be a short treatment event and they get home and, oh, the temperatures took a nosedive again, and they've gotta be the ones at that time to decide if it's more cost-effective and for safety reasons even, should I send people home knowing that it's probably gonna freeze again at 3:00 AM or should we stay? So, they're the type of person making that decision, it's, it's higher expectation of responsibility and, and call frequency.
Now, in any of the job descriptions that these people have, does it mention after-hours calls?
So, it's all over the map. There are some...
That's what we need to clean up because I, I could've sworn it.
Yes.
A job description says that part of their job when they were given was to cover, and now we're gonna supersede that contract or that deal that, you know...
So, the, the way that the job descriptions read is varied from must be available for emergencies to, there's one, one of the newer ones that we've updated, participates in the winter on-call rotation. So, from completely big to, we need you at all hours, 24/7, 365 for whatever reason, to you actually are in the on-call rotation.
Can I ask a question of the chief? Chief, your team, can they get multiple calls in a, in a given night and have to come in multiple times?
It could, yeah, absolutely.
Does that happen?
It doesn't happen to get multiple calls to come in frequently. Usually when we're coming in, it's because it's a pretty big event.
Yeah.
But certainly we can take multiple calls.
Yep.
And it hasn't, there has been times where we've come in, dealt with the situation, gone home, and then later on in the night or whenever, we got called again, absolutely.
Do you sometimes get called in in winter events and then your team have to risk their safety as well to come in?
Us?
Yes.
Of course.
All the time? Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Yep.
But the, the next question I would ask the chief is, do you have a, a rotating shift work crew where you have full-time staff on duty at all times?
Yes.
Yes.
That's, that's the difference primarily for DPW.
Yeah, ours is a little bit different, and I think I explained this before, I don't wanna get too far unless you guys want me to, but, you know, our on-call is strictly command and control, right? Ours is, we have on-duty supervisors that work 24 hours a day, that take on a liability of this town. We have our on-call commanders that are on-call for bigger events or any major issue, which I think I submitted, Derek, we have a policy over, you know, kind of governs that, but essentially if our on-call people are coming in, legitimately there's something not good going on. And not that our team can't handle it on those, it's, they need a little extra. You know, we have the attorney generals come in and the major crime unit for, you know, homicides and that nature. Our supervisors on the street are dealing with the street stuff, we need another commander to be able to offset that information, that stuff in our, in our building. Although it's not frequent, we do, we do have a lot of calls.
Yeah, I, I would expect so.
But, but the difference is they don't have somebody on 24/7 and they do. He has a supervisor on-call 20, not on-call, on-duty 24/7. DPW doesn't. That's the big difference.
I understand that.
And he wants, they, the DPW wants to bring a supervisor in to take care of the issue.
If you'd like to standardize the on-call shop supervisor rates with the IT slash police department, I think that probably would make a lot of sense. I think Derek had left it there because that's where we had kind of settled in with the, with the previous rates, but if you're worried about equity, that position is, is pretty consistent with the others.
Well, I'm, I'm still curious about the job descriptions when we gave people a certain amount of money, right? And their job description was part of this in there. That's what bothers me. And there's some, and I know for a fact that one position we're talking about included that coming in after hours and when something happened.
I think there's the general expectation of emergency response, and I think I'll speak for the police chief, fire chief, Derek Danielle, everybody here, every department. As a local government employee, we all know that there's gonna be times when we're required for emergency response. FEMA-level event, whatever, there's never been an issue where, oh, where the heck's DPW? Every single person comes in, myself included, secretary included, to handle that kind of stuff. I think this is the, this is the way that many other departments around the state handle the higher expectations of winter and what it entails. So, this, the 16 hours that you're getting for an on-call pay during a weeknight or the, you know, 67 or 68 hours or whatever the weekend turns into, you start looking at this by the hour, which is how some places do it, $2.50, $3.00, $4.00 an hour for all time on-call. We're getting a pretty good, you know, bargain and a nice insurance policy for sure out of that. And, and gone are the days unfortunately where someone would be on-call, cover a storm, and they'd be told to go home. You know, it was like an unofficial flex time, I'm sure, for, you know, a lot of people, but you can't really do that in today's day and age. So, I think that's why the trend to recognize what we're asking of our people above and beyond the typical, yes, we're government employees, we can respond to emergencies. You know, we, we don't wanna get something for nothing, and that's kind of where we, there we came to this.
I'm really not, the whole idea of what was bothering me from the start when I saw this was we just added a bunch of people to it that we didn't have before. Before, this was directly for DPW. Now, we've added the police department and IT. IT made a big adjustment. Looks like the police department made a good adjustment too, right, Derek?
Yes.
So, it came down from what's like $140,000 to about half. Now, when we figured this, we figured it started January 1, right?
Well, this would be what you would start budgeting on an annual basis because while we don't have this in the 2025 budget, you're gonna use for, you're gonna use the second half of winter in the 2026 budget in this winter, and then a year from now you'd use the other half. So, so this is what you would budget annually.
That's on DPW. I'm talking about police and, and IT. That starts January 1, those numbers. Thus, your, your on-call numbers start January 1, right?
If approved, if not approved, I think the, the thing that you're going to, the board may have to look at is what do you expect from these employees for responses outside of work hours?
What happens when the winter on-call supervisor does not answer the phone?
Pretty rare, but if... Pretty rare, um, but if they don't, usually I get the call next. Occasionally, they might dispatch, um, they, if it's a dispatch call-in, um, may call the next or the previous on-call person. If somebody doesn't and it's, you know, not for a good reason, um, they, they are subject to discipline or to be taken out, you know, they don't get the on-call pay, of course, if they're not answering, if they're not responding.
Has that ever happened? Were they?
We've never, we've never had an issue where someone's ducked a call, if that's, you know what I mean? There's been times when they've gotta call me because immediate pickup, you know, the first couple rings, nobody picks up, they just go right on, they're the director and then I'll get in touch with the union, and I've never had an issue getting a hold of that person either, so.
So Peter, are you saying that when we increased salaries that we also had some expectation that this would've been included as part of that? Is that what I'm to understand?
I'm, I'm saying the job description.
Yeah.
Not just from what happened a year ago.
Yeah.
The job description included, and we should've, I guess we should've looked at the job descriptions before we got too deep into this, but, um, that was included in there. And I wanna think it was, I thought, I could've sworn it was maybe the shop supervisor, but that was part of his.
So again, because the job description for fleet and operations manager and shop supervisor had been updated more recently, Adam put in much better, um, language for snow ice removal and other emergencies or equipment maintenance and repair. Uh, the cemetery foreman only says for burial services, does not say anything about for, um, being on the rotation for, uh, winter. And then solid waste foreman, highway superintendent and assistant DPW deputy director, just, I think one of them said on-call 24 hours a day.
Available for emergencies.
That's, you see where I'm coming from, and I happen to know the cemetery foreman's on, serves on-call.
And, and there's a, um, you know, I, I, yes, some of these positions didn't even exist when we had the, the 2015 MRI, uh, study, which did go into the, um, job descriptions, you know, to be recreated. Um, so I think we would want to standardize that. The, um, it's tough when someone does a wage and salary study and the job description says available for emergencies, that's a different ask than available for emergencies and, oh, by the way, every third or fifth day during the week is on-call for 16 hours.
That's different from being on-call and being available for emergencies, I get that.
Yep.
Okay, where do you go from there, guys?
Well, one thing is that the number last year I think was what, 26,000, so it's 4,000 more than what it was before.
The, um, a couple of things that tweak the amount is, um, without getting into non-public territory, we had a different mix of available supervisors for the rotation last year, um, which affected the average.
But why would that increase with the amount, it's still the same amount of hours?
But it was, again, I did the average of what was actually paid. We had one employee that was out on FMLA for an extended period last year that if that individual were working may have brought the average down a little bit.
I understand that.
So, so in, in the first year, in the first year, the assistant DPW director had no hours. In the second year, he picked up hours.
And based on, um, the calculations, it was based on hourly rates and we had non-union increases last year as well, so both the mix of, uh, which employees were providing that number of hours and the hourly rates for each changed from the.
Now Derek, when we looked at this, would this actually be a decrease for some people?
Yes.
Yes, it would.
It would. So we get the decrease, but it's still more mighty, I figured that one out. Jim, you got anything?
Nope, I'm all set.
Okay.
First of all, Adam, you said, you mentioned standardizing across for the shop supervisor, um, standardizing that to the other department rates, um, is that something that you're open, open to?
Uh, so if, meaning to get to the 30, 50, 75.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I wasn't gonna be the one to ask because I know it's already a hot topic, but, um, if, if the goal is equity, that position is, is pretty close to the IT, um.
Okay.
Level.
And the winter on-call supervisor rotation, is that, that's more or less what you've been operating with?
Yes.
Okay.
Richard, what you're, you're talking about changing that, now you just mentioned changing that number, that, if I figure this right, that comes out to about $325 a week that one person gets, it's not, it's not like somebody switches this.
250. The 75 would only come into effect in a holiday and it would replace either the weekday or the weekend, so the average would be 250 a week, unless there's a holiday, it could be 275 or 300.
Holidays are usually on.
Could be Mondays, so it would probably make it more like a.
So you do away with a, a 30 and make it a 75.
Right, and that one week, it happens 12 times a year.
And, and that 250 per week kinda is bang-on for, you know, other on-call weekly stipends, or at least across other industries, I don't know about municipalities necessarily.
So Adam, you mentioned that there was a flat rate in some towns.
Mm-hmm.
Like for winter, because it's not really a continuous thing.
Yeah.
You said it was like $2,500 per person.
Um, let's see, a couple, a couple, one department has a big pool of money that gets divvied up. Now, a lot of this, the problem is there's only so much publicly available information, so some of it is for DPW crew, which is a level that we're not discussing here and would be a union negotiation-type item, so, um, uh, let's see. Yeah, when I pulled the, um, the pay point study communities, both New Hampshire and Mass, uh, only a couple of flat rates, $2,500 a year per year per employee. And then during the summer, they have 18 hours a week at 1X for one employee and they rotate through by the week, so that's kind of a year-round thing, so. It, apples-to-apples is very tough when it comes to this because of all these other, some places have a four-hour minimum call-in, some have a two, some have a three.
I do think that that would lower the rate quite a bit.
I wanna get this put to bed, so we need to get it put to bed soon. Like, all week, I said, I gotta get copy of the job description and I never made the call.
So, the on-call shop supervisor, is that person on-call year-round or just during the winter?
They are on-call year-round, much like I am, much like the assistant director is in salary. Uh, the level of calls, even though it's less during the winter than the on-call supervisor rotation, um, it drops even farther in the non-winter, just based on.
What's this shop description say?
Accidents, um, that kinda stuff, usually the numbers go down.
So my notes indicate that the shop supervisor, and again, this is one that was more recently, that they shall be available to respond to snow and ice removal and equipment maintenance repair. Um, I'll pull up the actual language.
So why aren't they in the general rotation up above with the five?
Who's that, winter call?
Yeah.
There's only one guy.
It gets tough for that.
I'm just saying, why aren't they rotating that, cause your question, why aren't they just calling in a mechanic if they need a mechanic?
So we've got a fairly small staff, um, we, I don't know if everybody knows this, maybe I should've led with this information, um, our mechanics participate in snow ice removal operations, so, um, during a plowable event, both our mechanics are on the road. One, well, one on the road, one on the sidewalk machine, um, covering our roofs. Normally, the shop supervisor is the one back of the shop fixing as much as humanly possible until he gets overwhelmed or there's another, let's say a second or a third truck goes offline, he has to call one of them, back off their route to come back and help, otherwise, you know, now it's a cascading type, uh, event. So, um, unfortunately, if that person is part of the, uh, winter response on-call rotation, they can't do both, so you lose situational awareness of either the storm out on the roads or the shop and repair, and, and the fact that they're the only ones in the shop, uh, kinda makes it tough anyway, sorry, but then the others, um, uh, on the flip side, the other supervisors don't have that mechanic background, so they can't provide the shop coverage either. So it was asking too much, so I'm on-call for the storm, but then the second one thing is broken down, now I'm asked to come off the road and be in the shop trying to get stuff back on the road. So that's how that kinda came to be a, the separate category.
I think it's confusing.
It is confusing, like, but I, but I get it, so you're saying you're shorthanded because the mechanics now have to go out and actually do snow removal, so they're getting paid to go do snow removal.
Right.
Right? Are they doing that snow removal only during normal hours, but, or are they actually doing it off-hours? Cause I've seen it out in front of my house during off-hours, like, I would assume they're always out there.
Yeah.
So if something breaks down, now the shop supervisors have to do frontline work and have to get back into the shop and fixing.
Yes.
Those items.
Either that or it's just to the side until the mechanics are available to work on it, or he's just calling a tow truck and having it towed someplace.
But for a, you know, a simple, hey, my, um, my plow won't raise is a common one, um, or, you know, a new cutting edge or whatever.
Chain broke, exactly.
Exactly. You don't wanna take a, a truck off the route for hours, um, waiting if it is a relatively easy fix, so, um, so that's, that's the reason the, the kind of diver, um, division of responsibilities.
I almost would rather, like, it was 26,000 last year, we, we know that it was that, we're now raising it here, I'd almost rather give each one of them $3,000 or $4,000 a year, offer all six of them, and say during the winter, this is, you guys have to be on-call and do this sort of thing, that flat rate and just call it, whereas all the other positions that, and tho, these need to be discussed, which is police department and IT, which is more of a traditional on-call rotation, I'm having to get a call, I have to come in and do those sort of things. This seems very specific to winter and that time period, it's not a continuous year-round thing. So at least then we would keep, uh, the cost in check. I don't know, Richard, your thoughts or Jim's?
I'll let Jim go first.
Well, you know what, I can only hear about half of what's going on.
Oh, I see.
Okay, yeah, no, in that case, no, I, I would agree with that, um, I, ever since you had mentioned Josh, the, 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 the weekly, um, stipend, I was thinking more, um, you know, longer periods of time. Um, yeah, I think that would bring the cost down a little bit and it would, I think it would clarify things a little bit too.
The only problem with that that I see having a weekly, a week at a time, as Adam had mentioned, that if they get a, a storm, a supervisor could be actually working for 24 hours, and then what happens? He turns it over to the next guy in the middle of the week.
I don't think we're dictating the work.
Yeah, no, no, we're, we're talking sea, a seasonal or a weekly rate to be part of the rotation.
Yeah, so like, I can understand why some towns do a flat rate for the season, because they're basically saying, you're gonna be on-call during this time, it's gonna be hell, please be prepared, and you're getting this and your expectation is you're gonna be part of this and make sure that you're, you're running with it. So I think for, for DPW, I could see doing a seasonal thing specifically for the winter for those six individuals.
I can see, um, if I may, the, one of the big reasons not to go with a flat rate, a flat, um, you know, this is what you, per week for the entire season, um, is if you do have somebody that's either taking some vacation time or sick, like we had last year for, um, two, three months, um, you know, not to that extreme, but now you're into finances, prorating with us, how much to pay for that, or if somebody says, well, I'm not.
I don't think that's what we're talking about though, I think it's an incentive to be in the rotation for the entire season and it actually stabilizes that concern rather than exacerbating it.
Well, but what I'm saying though is if, so let's say you've got that seasonal payment, um, and then halfway through the season, somebody's no longer available for some period of time.
Danielle, how could we?
I was just thinking, you know, cause you'd said weekly or seasonal, I mean, if you come up with a flat rate and divide it by how many weeks are in the season, whether it's 20 weeks or however many weeks are in the season, and say, okay, this is how much, we're just gonna pay it out each week, and that way if someone drops out mid-season because of some unplanned medical event or something, now they're out of the rotation, they just don't continue on those weeks, they got it for the weeks that they worked, and you're still getting to that number that you said.
That's okay, but it's every six weeks.
What?
It's every six weeks that they're on, so they're not on.
No, but if you're gonna go to a type that's just a seasonal, you could pay it out in a weekly increment regardless of whether or not they're the person on that week. The rotation operationally would determine who's on that particular day for the call and who dispatch calls that day or whatever, um, but you're essentially getting a, a commitment and just standardizing it, kind of like how the educational incentives switched a few years ago from being paid out semi-annually to being paid out every hour regardless of, you know, what position it was.
I'm not sure if I like that.
My.
There's too, there's too much, there's too much, I think it's too, too easily for the system to get screwed up if somebody goes down, and then, you know, then it's just five people in the rotation, and then how, you know, what's the compensation then? You're, the way it sounds like we wanna do it is a pool of money, right? Let's say the six of them is $30,000, they each get $5,000, right? Or, would that be accurate?
It's a ballpark, ballpark figure, yeah.
One guy drops out, now what happens?
Can you, can you shift that money to the rest of the individuals if they're having to do more work, Danielle?
As in they're rotating more often?
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, the, the thing is, to me anyway, now it's getting to be more complicated when it's not that complicated. We do it weekly, I think if there's a flat rate involved, um, for the, you know, the, each day is worth a flat amount of money, it's very easy for us to, yep, here's the tally this week, on weeks where somebody covers a weekend or a holiday, they're gonna get a little boost for that immediately, uh, and then on weeks where they might only be on-call one night of that week, they'll get less, but the person that has more, you know, we can get to that same amount in the end if that's what you wanna target. My, you know, the, the derivative of the derivative piece of, we started off trying to, you know, target what other communities are doing from a number of hours of overtime for each type of day, uh, now if we convert that to a flat rate, some win, some lose, but the average is where it is, um, if we arbitrarily pick another number just because it's lower, um, just keep in mind that it's gonna, in the eyes of the employees anyway that are affected, every single one of them's gonna go backwards from where they've been the last couple of seasons, so I would just. I, I think what the framework Derek has works well from both a payroll perspective and I think, um, gets it to a, um, an easier, uh, nut-to-crack-for-finance.
But somewhere we're gonna go backwards from this.
Yes.
We already said that.
Right.
Yep.
If you wanna tweak, if you're worried about the dollar amount, we could tweak the, the proposed daily stipend, if you wanna, if you're trying to, to tweak the dollar amount. And I think that's what you're saying.
Just trying to remind you that it's not just numbers on the page, you're going from some, some lose a little, some gain a little to all lose if, if you do come down, you know, whatever amount, you know, decided upon, so.
I, I hear what you're saying about you think it's gonna be harder to manage the way that Richard and I said, hey, maybe a better approach. I think it'll be easier because they'll get a consistent amount every week of being in the real quick rotation call. Ultimately, they should all rotate through the same way as they did before.
Ideally, sure, but it, that, in reality, that's not the way it ends up working out.
So why isn't?
It wasn't even, there were some people that picked up more voluntarily than others.
So illness, you know, COVID was a bigger thing obviously, but you got illness, leave types, wife, kids might be out and they can't cover, so they do a swap. Last year, again, back to the same, you know, we had somebody out several weeks with a health issue, um, and it wasn't, for them anyway, their, their pattern wasn't consistent through the year. And it wasn't, for them, anyway, their, their pattern wasn't consistent through the year. So now we get into, okay, now we've got to somehow rejigger the remaining pot, you know? It brings a lot of.
So the load's not consistent, is what we're hearing.
In a perfect world, it is, but nothing's perfect, yes. Right. But if we say, okay, this week we have seven days and who worked what and they get paid accordingly, you know, it's been.
Yeah, there's still seven in each.
I think finance, and I don't want to put words in Danielle's mouth, but I think the biggest issue finance had was it became a different stipend for this person because they make X an hour versus this person. So you can't just put in one item in unis weekday rate, weekend rate, holiday rate. You have to say highway supervisor weekday rate, highway supervisor weekend rate, cemetery supervisor weekday, weekend. So that's where it got a little tricky, especially because it wasn't a an hour worked situation where you could just add it to.
What is the simplest way?
Simplest way is to develop a stipend on weekday, weekend, and holiday.
Like we have.
Yes. And I think the board needs to determine what the appropriate amount is.
And that's, that's what, all we're doing now is we're taking it away from being hourly. So now everybody's going to get the same when they're on-call.
If they're on, yeah, if they're on weekday, it's the same. If they're on weekend, it's the same.
Right.
The difference comes in on the OT, the actual, when they come in, they get their hourly rate.
Yes.
Then they get the three-hour minimum for DPW.
So if they get called in three times a night, do you get nine hours?
In the rare case where they, you know, exhausted the three hours, if there's multiple calls within three hours, you don't get multiple call-ins. But if it was a call at 4:00 PM, a call at 10:00 PM, and a call at 2:00 AM, yes.
Danielle, any concerns about inequity in the fact that these rates are different than the proposed rates below?
I mean, I always have that concern just from an HR standpoint, but I understand the call volume point that Adam made and, you know, what he's looking at for how many calls are happening. For IT, there are four people in the rotation, not one. It's just been one historically because we didn't have any on-call policy to hold the others to, so.
And also with IT, with available technology, they're likely not going to have as stringent a, as mile radius as DPW would be.
So they still have the same time response and they actually have, because I went over the work tickets with Brian to get a better understanding of it, they actually have more frequent calls physically to come in than remotely because when it, because they're not a 24/7 department, when a call has to come to them off-hours, it's a more serious type of thing where they're coming in and dealing with network switches, communication towers, radios for PD and fire, dispatch consoles going down, that sort of thing where they may, they have to physically come in.
Yeah, there's, there's just going to be less user help desk.
Right. Yeah, they're not getting like reset my password phone calls.
Yeah.
So it's different, but they're not necessarily getting the same volume of calls that would happen in a winter storm week when we have multiple back-to-back nor'easters. Because it's spread out throughout the entire year.
I'm pretty happy with what I see here. We come down from 140,000 to 70,000, I think is reasonable.
Well, if we want to get the amount from last year more in check, doing the math, changing weekdays to 75, weekends to 150, and holidays to 325 would get us closer to the number that we were last year.
Would that be less than what they were getting all across the board?
That'd be less for, yes, that'd be less for some of them.
For some of them or all of them?
Probably all of them.
Probably all, yeah. Let me look at, I had the minimum.
Because they were on hourly last year.
Right. And they were getting one and a half.
So last year, the minimum rate was $82 for a weekday, 165 and 330. Those were the minimum last year.
So I would say leave it as it is, which is my own feelings. Leave it as it is, but remember that next year when you go to, when we go to do this, that this is what it is. I mean, it's not something you're going to keep increasing every year. That's why I was against doing it on the hourly basis because that would be every year you think got an increase. And I would also, I would also think that we should go through the job descriptions and say, all right, well, this job description, you got this amount of money because you were on-call. And that's exactly why I brought that up because I specifically remember when we did that position, remember when we created that position, that that was part of the deal. And now we're going to give that person 200 bucks a week or 250 a week to do what he was con, what he was hired to do anyway. That's what bothers me about the system. So that needs to be fixed, I think, although six people, one of them's not even on, on-call list.
Right. The good news is they're non-union, so we could make that change at the next meeting if you want on the job description.
I do think on the winter on-call shop supervisor, he should be the same as the rest, uh, that are below.
No. And the reason why I said that is just what I said, how he was hired.
Well, if you're saying that how he was hired, then he shouldn't have any on-call.
We're trying to meet him halfway? I don't know. But that's, that's been, it's a stickler with me. We hire somebody to do it, we put something in their deal, we pay them for that. When we hire them, we give them that incentive, we give them that pay to do that and then, oh, we're going to give them more now to do what we already pay them to do. But it sounds like, it sounds like he's not complaining, he was happy last year. Okay.
You just have different scales is what I'm saying, like, and if he's getting a similar number of calls as someone else, that's where I have concern about inequity.
But he's not because he's only going to get in the call when there's an issue. He's not going to, I don't think he goes out and takes care of everything, does he?
No. I'm not saying he's the same as the people above. I'm talking about the pay scale that's down below for police department and information technology. If he's getting calls annually.
So that's what you want to do? You want to make him the same as?
I think you should keep a flat rate and consistency.
Which one did we talk about, Adam?
So.
You brought him to the 30.
So we're just to clarify, is Josh, Joshua asking about still keeping him in the winter period only, but bringing the hourly rates to the, not the hourly, the daily rates to the others, not to bring him into a 365?
Correct.
Okay, yes.
Yep.
Because that would save you about $3,000, $3,300.
Save us or add to it?
No. It's going up slightly.
Going up.
Instead of 170 or 180.
I would put them up to the 100, 200, 400?
No, the 30, 50, 75. We're talking about when they're on-call.
Instead of being.
The 20, 40.
Right.
It adds roughly $1,000.
Yeah, instead of 280, it's 180, it's 250.
Richard, how do you feel about the pieces here? Because I think if we wanted to keep in budget, we would stay around there.
No, I, I think I agree with you on that. And yeah, no, I was the, I was the one who first mentioned bringing them into, into standardized form with the rest of the departments. So, yeah, no, I'm going to.
Why don't you make that motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to change the winter on-call shop supervisor from 20, 40, and 80 to 30, 50, and 75.
I second that.
Any further discussion on that? Jim?
Yes?
I mean, yes.
Yes.
Yes. And then, so, and maintain all other proposed stipend levels?
Sure.
And then we also had the proposed personnel plan amendment.
So you mean to get the job descriptions updated?
Well, yes, and the personnel plan amendment. We would bring that for signature next week. That was.
Changing these numbers.
Yes.
Adding the language in.
The language. Do you want to, I guess, a final amount, a final proposal that you can sign off on next week?
And job descriptions looked at.
Okay.
You guys also, you agree with that?
I agree with that. I think all of the job descriptions should have in that, so that way we're not discussing this anymore.
Well, I was waiting for the cemetery supervisor as the only responsibility.
Just don't tell him. Hopefully, he's not watching. Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll have those, my amended job descriptions.
All right. You all, Sarah?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, this was important to you.
Thanks, Al.
Any updates on the police station?
I know the police chief has been working with the architects on the police station, just the, I guess, a couple of final revisions and tweaks, and we may be coming forward at a future meeting, next meeting with a little, with ash for you. But we're not prepared to do that this evening.
All right. That answers that.
Okay.
Chief, five chief? Where do we stand on the tower?
I spoke to them today. The pots are in. We're just working, come up with a schedule to get it done.
We still have the same budget?
Yep. The pots were wanted, they're in, I haven't got an invoice yet.
Okay. And we still have the Kenworth out of service, Adam?
Yes.
Need to discuss the budget?
Nope, that's next. While we haven't really discussed it. I still have a concern about elected officials not having any money in those lines. I'm not going to be here, so I don't care. I shouldn't say it, put it that way. I think that it's important that supervisors on the checklist get compensated.
I 100% agree with it.
You know, and we have zero in the lines. And I don't think, I think that if we're going to, if you're going to eliminate the selectmen getting paid, you should do it gradually so that people who were elected, when they got elected, they got elected with a salary. And then so there'll be two more, there'll be two left after I, because I'm not going to run again, so there'll be two left. And it should be decreased and then the next people coming in will not have a salary. Whoever replaces me won't have one and then two years from now, they won't have one.
They got elected with a stipend in the budget, not, they didn't accept a job with a salary attached to it that we're modifying downwards.
Really? So you're telling me how I accepted the position? I accepted that position when I ran for the position, right? It had a stipend.
It did.
Okay.
Did you sign any employment agreement that said that you were going to be paid a certain amount for a certain amount of work?
No. Does anybody, do we all do that in the town?
No, that's exactly my point. That is exactly my point, Peter. Nobody does that.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure where you're going.
None of our elected officials do that.
None of our elected officials do what?
They don't sign any sort of employment agreement with, with a certain amount of pay attached to it. This is us voting on our own pay on a year-to-year basis from money that is not our own.
I think none of the money in here in this budget is our own, so I think we should be very clear about that.
That's correct.
I do think that there are certain roles that have expectations that are guided by RSAs that require a certain amount of hours to be done, that do facilitate getting the best people that we can to do the job. I think that the supervisor of the checklist, and I agree with that, Peter, wholeheartedly, they have requirements by election. I think we have the same thing with the town clerk as well. Those should have it. But even in this elected official position that we have here, we all do a lot of hours, too. The elected officials have the ability to turn down a stipend as well. And we proved that this year. So.
I think that needs to be given to those people, that option. I don't think it should be a mandatory thing. If that person, if these people who were elected, right, were elected knowing that there was a stipend and then they decide not to do it anymore, I don't think that's Now, I know you, you don't agree with that. You think you should be doing it for nothing, but they, again.
Not the supervisors.
Well, the select board are required under state law to do certain things also.
That's true.
Okay? So if it's good for one, it's good for the other. The excuse that supervisors of the checklist should get paid because they're required to do things, so should the select board because they're required by law to do certain things. They're not?
It's not that they're not required to do it, I just.
What's the, what's the stop, what's to say that?
The supervisors are not the governing body. They don't set their own budget. We set it. We're setting a budget for our own pay theoretically.
Which has been there for how long? How long has that budget, has that line been there?
It, it does not matter how long it's been there. It doesn't matter how long you've done something, you don't have to keep doing it. I have never liked that argument in support of anything. The budget committee removed it last year. We continued forward with it and it's the position of the board, so I haven't, you know, argued with it. I turned down the stipend myself because I have a personal conviction against it, but I'm certainly not going to vote to put it back into this budget. The supervisors, I will, but not our, not our own.
Because it's your own.
Correct. It's been my position for the select board and the school board for the past seven or eight years now that I've been in public service in Gofftown.
So there's the same argument, right? 20 years ago, 30 years ago, when they put it in, or however long it's been in there, right, that they've gotten stipend. And all these years, people have been voting for it and then all of a sudden, budget committee decides that position should not be funded.
Yep, and then the voters approve that budget. So I'm just saying, 20 or 30 years ago, when they voted to put it in, would you have made the argument that we've never had it before? So why should we start now? Because that's the argument that you're making here.
No, I'm not.
You are.
I actually.
You're saying that we've been doing it, so we need to keep doing it. That means 20 or 30 years ago, we never should have.
So what you're saying is there's nothing that requires you come in here and sign paperwork every week?
No, there is.
No, what, what's, what, what's the reason? If I don't come in and sign the paperwork, what's, what happens?
I think.
Are you?
What happens?
Are, are, are you making the argument that the pay is what makes us do our jobs?
I'm saying it helps us make you do your job. It gives you a commitment. Your commitment is you're being paid to do that job and you should be doing it.
I think the real question is, did the current members of this select board ever vote in a stipend? Like, did you vote to create that stipend?
There was, no, it was there.
It was there when you came. So nobody here actually voted that in, as far as I know. You and myself, Richard, both made a choice to not take a stipend. We're doing that on our own accord. I think if people, you know, had a stipend when they came in here and there was an expectation, it's up to them to make that same choice as well, just like any one of our state officials that are either in our Senate or Congress, they also get a stipend, whether how small it is, they get mileage and everything else like that. It's their choice on whether or not they want to donate that to a charity or they want to donate it to somebody else, whether or not they want to take it, or even, as we did, turn it down. It's their choice.
It's the voter's choice and they chose not to put it in the budget.
The budget committee chose not to put it in the budget. The voters voted on the budget.
The voters voted.
And they voted.
Yes, that's true.
And we made a choice to do that.
So when the voters voted to approve the budget, did they not vote to approve that line? Is that line not part of the budget?
They voted for the overall budget. I don't think that they went through and said, every line here, I actually approve of one way or another. Sorry, that's not how that works.
I've got a lot, a lot of feedback on that line in particular.
Yep.
Saying not to put it into the budget.
And I've also got a lot of feedback, too, that people, you know, asked me the question, are you going to take a stipend? I said, no. I did it for me. I said, no. I did it for me. I did it because, quite frankly, I want to see this town excel in being a great town like it always has been. I also think that our budget, which we haven't even gotten to yet, is a bit inflated in certain areas, and we should think about it.
Okay.
But I don't think that the stipends were the major cause of the inflation.
That's right. They're not in the budget, so they couldn't be.
Right. So, we can make this-
You don't get it.
We can make this a big thing, but we've already dropped out two stipends already this year.
I'm not, I'm not really making it a big thing. It's, it's in the budget the way it is from the prior year. And if you guys want to vote to add it back in, I'm one vote of four, in this case, sometimes five. Like I said, I'm not going to be outside picketing Town Hall, but that being said, I'm still not going to vote to put stipends back in the budget.
I never said I was going to either, but I do think that we would have to vote it out, because-
It's not in there.
It's not in there now, so you would have to vote to put it in.
In the budget, yeah.
Yes.
But there still was some fiduciary responsibility for the people that were voted in initially. Derek, was that ever removed, as far as I know, like?
Was what ever removed?
So, how are the budgets, how is the budget paying for the select board stipends now?
Right now, you are overspending that line.
Right.
And as we get to the end of the year, if the admin, the executive government is going to be running over, we will make a recommendation to perform a budget transfer from another division, our state report division that is under-expended.
Well, but we do that every year. We, we vote stuff, Budget Committee approves stuff, and doesn't approve something, but we still do it, because it's a bottom-line budget. Okay? So, I would expect that when you go through the budget and you see something that was under-expended, then you're going to cut that line. Or over-expended, and you're going to let it go through with your reasoning. The way you're thinking is that because it's not there, it's okay, we leave it out. So I don't understand the idea of, well, you know, it's not there, so we don't, we don't do it, we don't continue to do it.
Yeah, but I, I never said that I agreed with making the budget transfers in the first place. That, again, I, I'm one vote out of five here.
That's a terrible excuse, a one out of five. When we're talking about-
How is that a terrible-
Budget transfers, that's how the system works.
So, wait, 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 wait.
Budget transfers are all over. We do it every year.
That's true, but, Peter, it's not in the budget. I didn't support making the budget transfer. My point is that I can't single-handedly stop it, and you're saying that because it happens, it's not a valid argument, because it's going to happen anyway.
No, you made, you don't, you don't agree with budget transfers, that's what your statement was.
No, no, I-
That's, you made that statement. And budget transfers are part of our budget, part of our operating, that's how we operate in a lot of cases.
Okay. But we're talking about-
We heard it-
We're talking about voting to put it back into the budget, are we not?
Mm-hmm.
So, what you're saying is, either we vote to put it back into the budget, or the voters approve a budget without it, and then we just do it anyway.
Derek, which line, number was that, in the budget sheet that you gave us?
Is that a yes or a no, Peter? Are we just going to do it anyway?
Yeah.
Okay, well then there you go.
Yeah.
If I can't stop it, and the voters can't stop it, that's it. All I can do is throw my hands up in the air and say, I voiced my opinion.
How about when we did all the budget transfers to get the road, extra road stuff done?
Mm-hmm.
That was okay?
Did any of that money go into your pocket? Were you working on the roads?
Well, that's a silly one right there.
Is it though?
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not, I'm done, I'm done with you. I'm done, I'm done. I'm done talking about you.
Peter, no.
I'm done talking to you about it. You don't get it. That's how our system works.
Okay.
So, so just for clarification, so elected officials falls really into two different categories. We have a rate that gets paid to the town clerk that has historically been an individual that has worked in a salary, full-time position.
Yep.
That falls under, that is on page two of your budget report, under 14, followed by six zeros, 41250. So that's elected officials. So that amount, the Budget Committee did not reduce to zero, because at the time, that was capybal, that's the town clerk's basically wages. But it does fall under an elected official's stipend.
That was 41250?
Yes, 41250. So they'll all be 41250, but one will be under town clerk, so that's the town clerk. And then there were two others. There were the select board, which is on, on page one, which is under the administration. Again, 41250 with 13, followed by six zeros, org code. And then you had supervisor of the checklist, and then you also had one moderator.
Yeah.
And one assistant moderator. The supervisor checklist and the moderators were grouped under the elections division. So that's on page three, the top of page three. So that amount is there. So, so that amount, we had budgeted, that's ninety-three hundred in past budgets for supervisor of the checklist, checklist and moderators.
Okay, so let me ask then, for the election officials that are on page three here, 2024 actuals, would that be the recommendation for a stipend for those people in 2026?
That would be very similar. So, what we would recommend, if you were to go back to pre-cut by the Budget Committee, supervisor checklists were $250 a month times 12 months.
Okay.
That's $9,000.
Okay.
And then in this upcoming year, there would be three elections. So you would pay the moderator $300 times three, and the assistant moderator $150 times three. So that would be those amounts.
Okay.
Derek, there are three assistant moderators.
The other two get paid as?
They get $150 per election.
Okay, then they only get it, though, for the?
For the election.
I'm only seeing two in here, under that line. I'm... So, so there'd be three assistant moderators for each? Basically, it'd be 450 plus 300, so it'd be 750 per election. So the 9,000 plus 750.
And that was for 11, 4140, 41401?
Then what's 41250, isn't it?
I'm looking at the left columns and then going across.
So the second line down on page three?
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
But the voters voted not to support that last year, but we're going to put it back in?
I'm going to make a motion to put 9,750 back in.
I'll second that.
It would be, just for clarification, it'd be $11,050, because we have three elections at 750.
Okay, 11,000?
250.
250, okay.
I'll second it.
11,000 what?
250, into the elected officials for-
Under, under elections.
Under elections. For the supervisor of the checklist and the moderators.
So Josh made a motion, seconded by Richard. Jim?
Yes.
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 When are we presenting?
Thursday night.
So, looking at the rest of the budget. If my math was correct, going through the Excel file, Derek, and all the line items, it looks like from the default budget, compared to what the department heads proposed, there's a difference of $3,747,797, which is, it's a 15% increase, if I did the math right, from last year. Is that correct?
I, I can't comment on the percentage, but yes. And I could, just to kind of focus your discussion, about, so $2.3 million are in your CIP department. That's in your, in CIP. You also have a request for $350,000 to deposit into the capital reserve fund for fire apparatus, as well as a request from the library board of trustees for $50,000. So, of that 3.7 million, 2.7 million are CIP and those two special articles. It would be our recommendation that you fund the fire apparatus capital reserve from unassigned fund balance.
I agree with that. I make a motion to fund the 350,000.
We haven't got to that point, though, have we? Then the special, we do in the special articles?
They're kind of all grouped together. I'll, I'll leave it to you, whatever your-
Well, normally, we, we do all special articles together, take a look. But that's fine, if you want to just do it now. Doesn't make sense.
Well, I think it kind of gets some of that out of the way, and we get it out of the budget discussion, right? And you said there are 350,000 and a 50,000, correct?
You want to do the library also?
It is, it's our recommendation to do the 350,000. I think if you're going to consider the library one, do it as a separate discussion, separately.
I agree. Okay. I, I make a motion to put the 350,000, or take the 350,000 dollars out of the unassigned fund balance for the fire operations as a special one.
Jim?
Who was the second?
We ain't got a second yet.
Second.
Jim's the second. Jim's the second. Any discussion on that? Jim, you're a yes, I'm a yes?
Yes, yes.
So, Danielle and I did talk about this this afternoon. Again, I think at some point, you should discuss on whether you're going to do a capital reserve fund for the library, and how you would fund that. Another recommendation that could be a potential would be what our auditor has recommended in the past are one-time non-recurring costs. And of those in your budget right now, you do have a Packer for solid waste. That is not a recurring cost that we see-
Yearly.
Yearly. That is one that you'll see every five or so years. And that's a $430,000 expense that's in CIP. It, it's grouped in with one other, it's grouped in with one other one in the line. It's under the one that's like for 730,000 or, but that's, that, that would be, you basically have another, at max, half million of unassigned fund balance to play with, if you wanted to put it out to article and fund a project or fund something from that. That would be, that would be comfortable, beyond that, you're going to fall back below your 12%, and you're going to undo.
My feelings are that we don't need to make that decision right now.
And why is that, Peter?
I want to see what the Budget Committee does with the road plan, because I'm going to do the same thing I did last year. If we have to, I'm going to put a special article up, and I may want to use that 500,000.
I think that that is something that we should consider for the road plan. However, I still would like to see what the plan looks like. And I think that, we have not seen that yet, on what the recommendation is. And I don't know if Adam has that tonight, or, perfect.
So I've got two sheets here. One, top sheet would be an example of my recommendation for the road plan for 26, based on the current budget level. And then page two would be at the recommended budget level to get done.
Adam, in which, which budget lines does this include? This seems like it's more than just reclamation.
Yes. I don't want to assume, I'll just come right up. So, this is not the entire amount, but the road plan typically is put together with funds from the reclamation line, which historically has been spent largely on reconstruction and large drainage projects. The resurfacing line, which is in the operating budget, historically, to ensure that if all the capital articles failed for one, the years that they were all in articles, that we would still have money to get at least a base level of paving done, or overlay the streets that were rebuilt the previous year. It also includes funds from our sidewalk maintenance line. We've got usually a good chunk of that budget every year is spent on rebuilding sidewalks, not just maintaining them. It takes from our gravel and stone and drainage maintenance as well, to some degree. Those are the big-ticket items that kind of go in. So if you take a look at the, the first sheet, it's not quite all of that money, but it's, it's a good chunk. We still have other items, like our gravel crushing comes out of reclamation each year, so that's, you know, typically 50 to 75,000 a year that we're spending recycling our asphalt pile. So this leaves enough for some of those other smaller projects, drainage projects and stuff like that, but it's, it's a good number to put forth for, for road resurfacing and road rebuilding.
So, Adam, just looking at this plan, is this your recommendation in the two cases that we get moving forward next year?
I, I never want to say never until springtime comes and all the pitchforks have come out and gone, but-
Of course.
If, if you ask me today, this would be my recommendation.
This would be your recommendation. And so, with that in mind, are there any ones on here, and Peter, maybe you've been here longer, and Jim, than any of either Richard or myself, are there any on here where we think the town would say, you keep doing that road over and over again?
So, there are kind of those three categories of roads. We've got the roads that have previously been rebuilt, main roads primarily, and collector roads, that are, in some cases, coming up on 20 years, 22, 23 years since they were rebuilt. Largely, we've kept up with those, but we do have a few of these represent roads that are quote-unquote overdue, which I, I kind of tag about 10 years is when you should start thinking about resurfacing a road. So Page Hill Road, Tibbetts, East Dunbarton and Lesnick would be roads that are overdue, to either 2010 or 2011 construction originally. So, so there's that category. There's those main or collectives that have been redone. There are, there are the same type of category for neighborhood streets, which have been rebuilt in the past. I, I kind of tag overdue as 15 years for a neighborhood street, so not as highly traveled, lower expectation, lower level of service, and there's just more of them, so we can't even afford to do a 10-year cycle if we wanted to. Those streets that you see, Ashler, Bailey, Highland and Pine Ridge, those are on that list. So those were reclaimed and rebuilt in 2003. So they're beyond that 15 years by a fair shot. Those, if you might remember, made one of our lists last year as kind of being a next up for that category. Then we've got the category of, they haven't been rebuilt in, in recorded history, as far as I know, anyway. So, we target them based on the condition. That would be your Ivy, your wall and your Dizonier. Ivy wall, there's a tiny piece of heel left to do, and then Dizonier. Ivy wall and that little piece of heel are the worst-conditioned roads in town. They also, though, finish along with Dizonier, but those three finish, the streets in that neighborhood above College Road that was started years ago, and we've marched right through with the expectation, we'll just do the whole neighborhood until it's done. Dizonier Street is in that same neighborhood, but it's just below College Road, but it similarly is, is in terrible condition. So, that would finish all the streets above Mast Road in that corner of town.
And we would finish out our promise at that point.
Exactly, exactly. So that's the reason those all make the list. And then we have Mast Road makes the list. Of course, people will always say the, the main roads get a little bit more attention. I think Mast Road, in Penarville anyway, people are starting to see the age of it, and, and this is just a continuation of what we started a couple of years ago with these- And, and this is just a continuation of what we started a couple of years ago with these phased improvements. It, it gets pretty expensive to do what we're doing on Mast Road with the ADA improvements and the sidewalk reconstructions and drainage. So we're finding the smaller chunks are better, the contractors are better able to handle the amount of granite work or the ADA panel work and we're better able to afford it when we break it up. So, so that's why Mast Road is on there to continue that. And then the last item you see on there is the top code of, of the one reclaimed street that we had this year.
Okay. And if we manage to get the extra budget?
Ah, yes, okay. So with extra budget, there's a couple of things that we could accomplish. I guess the biggest ticket, the biggest takeaway I would want you to see is in the, the box below with that remaining service life, you might remember either from the road plan piece that I gave the budget committee a bit ago or our presentations in the spring. What we're trying to do is inject life into the road network. You never want to see, if you can, you want to avoid negative remaining service life, which means the whole network as a whole is, is losing ground. In the current budget level with these streets as selected, we're losing 74 lane mile years. It's, it's got some made up unit, but it's a way of looking at the whole network age. Whereas if you look at the proposed budget with all the streets from, from the current budget scenario and then added a few more, we can actually get to a positive remaining service life. So we've actually injected more life into the roads than they've all aged collectively in that one year. So the changes for the proposed budget would be, we would have enough money to wheel and deal with the sewer commission. They want to try to get Cross Street and a little piece of Higgins done if they can and start the Rochambeau neighborhood with sewer work. I used the numbers that we had from the Louis Street project was the last time we, we worked on a good sized road together. The only caveat I have there is that Louis Street was not end-to-end drainage, so it might be a little low, but it's in the ballpark. And that would be a split with sewer. Usually we, we divide the base coat of asphalt 50/50. We take care of some of the gravel work and we pay for the drainage work that they bid out as part of their larger contract. They take on the, the risk and the construction management aspect of it and then we end up top coating the following year. So it does, you know, it makes sense for them for sure. If we have the money, it makes sense for us because it's one less thing on our plate too, as long as the price is right. The problem with the numbers is it's all bid-based, so if they have a bid year where there's not a lot of people bidding on it, you might get those sky high bids. So we'd have, you know, some discussion to be had, I guess. If, if they say, yes, we can do it, but it's $500,000, we'd want to talk again and decide what that does to the plan.
Yeah, at least update everybody. But I think this is the first one, Peter, I've seen where we actually have positive value on it.
Yes, the, the biggest, the last two things in green there, you see Tyrell Hill, that fog seal, bang for the buck from a preventative maintenance, that's hitting something that's fairly new. So this is, to answer your question from the last sheet, this is the one you may hear about, hey, we just paved Tyrell Hill a couple of years ago. If you can hit these roads early enough with a preventative treatment like a crack seal and a fog seal, the idea is you extend that life and you're not quite as quick to the full overlay, which gets expensive. So we could spend some short-ish money for the entire length of Tyrell Hill for a crack seal and fog seal with the hopes that it's extending the overall lifetime. But that, that, those items right there add 26.3 lane mile years of, of service life. So that's what's pushing this plan into the positive.
I just think that when you discuss that with the budget committee, that like you need to kind of knock that out of the park and discuss that right up front.
You would end up explaining it to them already, right?
They got an airful from me for sure. They'll get this again for my, you know, my second half presentation, but yeah, I, I think it's, they need to hear from a lot of different angles.
Yeah, and I, I think just explain the, the reason why this would be, and I, I think our people in town need to hear that too, is like, we're trying to get ahead and this is a new strategy, you know, why we're doing these roads again. Because I don't think everybody understands that.
And, and obviously 18,000 opinions you'll get, but the majority is all we need, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So that's kind of how those all landed on there.
I, the only one I really disagree with is Fearsen. What, it gets no traffic. And we got a tremendous amount of heat for doing the other gravel road up there.
We got a, we got a couple very vocal.
Is it gravel road now, is that?
Yeah, Fearsen is a gravel road.
I agree with that. Like, I'm totally on board with that one.
The, the folks that live on it would like it converted.
How many houses on that, two?
Yeah, I think four.
Is it four?
Yeah. The folks that, you know, take a walk with their dog are the ones that you hear from.
Sure, how long the road is it?
Lengthwise, I think it's about three quarters of a mile, but I've got it all square yardage, so I don't know. But so the big, the bang for the buck for us as a department with gravel road conversion is it, in the long term, it changes how we have to operate by having gravel roads left. We can't salt gravel roads because it undermines the material. So it turns into a worse mud slop than you would normally have, especially in the dead of winter. So we have to have a separate truck come back after the storm. So there's a period of time where the conditions on the gravel roads are, I won't say treacherous, but substandard, until they're, until that straight sand truck has now finished everything else they have to do and then they get rid of the salt and add sand and then they go back and treat. Our grader is 30 something years old and I have said a few times, I do not want to have to replace it. They're pretty expensive and I don't want to buy another grader because it's really only used for this now. So we'd either be in a situation where we would have to pay a couple of times a year to have somebody come in and grade these roads. Calcium gets applied, that kind of thing to, to keep them down. But then the other piece of it is the, you know, the ongoing maintenance, you have washouts, road shoulder, you know, erosion, that sort of thing. So, so that's kind of why we've been trying to pursue conversion of the last few gravel roads, because as time goes on now, they're farther and farther apart. So now you've got the Summit Way up to the top of South Mountain is one little stretch of gravel road. Fearsen is the only other one left in that whole quadrant of town. And then we have a few in Panardville and one across the river on, by the Ice Arena. So, you know, it gets less and less efficient for operations to have to chase after these.
I, I get that, I guess to Peter's point that, and the town doesn't see that. So where does the cost savings besides time savings come into? Because again, you don't want to pay for the, for the truck because it would be a lot and then we'd have to justify that. But now we're talking about more RSL again because you're adding more road, right?
Yep.
Gets into the overall cost that we're trying to meet now. So we go from like 260 miles to how much?
Right, 260.75 or whatever.
Now you're having to keep up with that.
But we do, you know, we're keeping it up currently, so it is a.
So the simple question would be for me is like, could you contract somebody out to take care of those roads?
We can. It would cost a fair amount of money to do it.
The thing is that we caught so much heat for doing the other one up there. And I think they even had an accident now because people fly down that road.
Are we talking about Bryan Road?
Yeah, Bryan Road.
Yeah, there's a few other factors.
There was only one house on that road.
I mean, if grading's the problem, I mean, there's plenty of like companies around here that would grade.
So you can certainly pay people to do it, you know, 500, 700 bucks an hour, whatever it is. We'd need treatment. So if, if we're trying to get out of the game altogether, you know, there's that piece as well, so.
I just think you need to have strong.
I'm not going to die on the hill of.
Yeah, I wouldn't die on that hill.
I'm telling you the reasons why we've proposed to.
I would much rather put that money into someplace else that we could use it.
Jim or Richard, any thoughts on that one?
No, I agree with you guys. You know, you've still got Foch on the line you got to take care of, that's in bad shape.
Yep.
I just want to get rid of the streets that you need a mule to travel across.
Well, this would be on him, on that list three months a year.
Just a little bit at a time, chip away at it. That's what I, that's my preference to those streets that we've been putting off forever and ever. I just don't think that's fair. I don't think it's the way we should, you know, I'm, I'm all for keeping the good roads good, but I think we owe it a duty to those people, to those streets to, to be able to have a decent road to come home to, to, to where I look at it.
Yeah, because Fearsen would be 85,000. I mean, to Jim's point, if you could put that more towards one of the roads that has a significant number of potholes, I think it would go a long way with town.
Okay, one of your, our input on that.
And as I said.
So let's get back to what we're talking about. What my concern is, is the budget committee going to go back in again this year and cut $500,000 out of it?
They may, but I think having a, a strong plan going in and discussing it and being sound, I think you're in a better position.
I agree with that.
Pardon me?
No, I, I agree with what Josh is saying and I also think the makeup of the committee is a little bit different than last time as well. That all being said, I think from this prior year, we've all gained a little bit of experience for what a reduced road plan actually looks like. So I, I, you know, I can't make any guarantees on their behalf, but yeah.
Even at town meeting, even when we had a town meeting, members of the budget committee said they were in favor of the bond that, not the extra five, not bond, but special article. But nobody ever, I don't know if they understood that somebody had to make a motion to cut it by a dollar in order to vote on it.
Yeah.
So they can't change, they didn't, we didn't change their, their number. They had, they had already voted no on it and then when they heard, they didn't, they couldn't change their number. They had to change, they would have had to change it by a dollar, increase it, decrease it in order to get the, the vote on it. They didn't do that. That's a leadership problem.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with the road piece. Adam, thank you for digging into that.
Sure thing. I think if, if you don't mind, I give you, I promised you one more thing last week too and it was just a kind of a plot of where single stream recycling costs have been the last few years.
And I think for people watching.
To that 500,000, in case you need that one, we're thinking that.
But definitely a strategy the board could.
That was a, that's what I think I would like to do.
Yeah, and I, I think for people watching and understanding of the budget difference and Adam, for you too, just collectively of all the things, because I went through what Derek sent out, 61% of the increase sits in your budget.
Yeah.
And so justification of each one of those things is going to be critical.
Well, let's remember last year, all the CIP stuff was cut.
Yeah.
Nothing, you had nothing last year, right?
Right, we were close to 100% of the cut.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's up this year, but because you're trying to catch up from last year, you didn't do anything, so.
So what are we looking at here?
Oh, so I think the way it was discussed, or the talking point last week was that I set it at a number that was actually, for, for 2026, I budgeted $65 a ton for the entire year. And the question I had for the board was, would you rather I not be as conservative given the fact that the current pricing is over that? I, I gave you a couple of reasons why the New Hampshire Recycles and the industry in Northeast seems to feel that prices have stabilized and they should come down a little bit next year, but forecasting is a tough job. So I could see the argument to try to peg it a little higher, but I also, we're working on the budget, I, I don't know.
So what'd you budget it, at the 80?
So I budgeted at 65. As of this month, we're paying $78 a ton.
Which line, Adam?
Uh, let's see, so 3230. Sorry. That line makes, is made up of a few different things. The biggest contributor though is our single stream processing cost. To give you an idea of.
Your page 20, about halfway down.
Thanks, Derek.
45930, okay, got you. Thank you.
So the rough amount of tonnage that we have for single stream each year is about 2,100 tons. So if, let's say it was at 80, you know, you'd be talking $15 times 2,100 would be the.
So it'd be a raise from 150, 150,000 to 168,000? And the default budget is 108?
Yep, so last year summer, we were down in that trough. So as I was generating my budget, I budgeted $45 a ton for 2025. But as you can see, we've been over that $45 pretty much for the entire fiscal year. So I just didn't want to make that mistake two, two years in a row, if the board felt we should be a little bit more conservative with this particular line.
Well, right now your actuals are 96,000 and we're at three quarters of the year, right?
Uh, yes.
When was the last bill?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know.
There's another one that sometimes.
Those are 24 actuals.
Oh, thanks Derek.
The 25 actuals are actually closer to 100, 100,000.
100,000, thank you.
And it does lag for several weeks, but I can't, I'm not sure which week was the last one we paid.
So we may end up over on this one this year, is basically what I'm hearing, Derek.
Yes.
Potentially.
Well, I'm glad we.
Well, there's another one that's company, sometimes they're a little slow on getting, not slow, it's just.
Well, Adam did a, Adam did encumber, like he did a PO, so some of that, so the actual build amount is 82,000 and then he's got 19,000 in a PO. But again, once that PO runs out, you still got to pay the bills.
Right. So for instance, if, if, if all of 2026 is at $80 a ton versus my 65, that would be 2,100 tons at $15 differential, 31,500.
If we did it 65?
If we did it at 80 instead of 65.
Yeah, I mean, the number goes up, but if it was at 65 for some reason, which we don't know, right?
65 is what I picked as a, hey, looking, you know, a year and a half in the past and then looking at what they're telling us for projections, trying to get back, you know, hopefully it's turning the corner here, but.
But this is all, this calculation is at 2,100 tons?
Yes.
So.
There's the other things that make up that line are.
Oh, there's more in that line?
Yes, yeah, sorry. We've got a tire rental, tire trailer rental and electronics, propane tanks, tires, that kind of stuff.
Okay, so 136,000 of that 150,000 is, is the tonnage.
Yes.
Yep. So that number would go up significantly.
This is one that.
Be 182,000.
Derek and I had talked in the past about this salt, there may, there may be at some point some benefit to having a contingency line for certain items that are so variable depending on season or, or in this case, market fluctuation, where you wouldn't have to be super conservative every single year if you had a little, little kitty kind of stashed away, but nobody wants to fund that at a huge amount either, so.
I don't know if it was three or four years ago, somebody at the budget committee made a cut and we went over that year.
Yeah. I'd like to think we're away from the days of $100 a ton or where it's more expensive to recycle than to landfill, but until it actually happens, it's hard to say.
I would actually assume that we may still go up next year. I don't think it's going to go down based upon current economic trends.
Well, it depends on trying to start buying again.
Well, I didn't see that in the negotiation. I didn't hear, hey, you know, we got Adam covered. I didn't hear.
It's tough because we can't shut it off, you know?
I don't think you can shut it off.
Well, let me say this, we. Well, let me say this, we can't completely shut it off. There is always the nuclear option if price continues to go.
And what's that?
High, and the nuclear option is to talk to Waste Management about landfilling our single stream. You can imagine all that goes along with that. It's not the same rate if we landfill single stream as solid waste, because it, by weight, takes up a larger volume in the landfill. But if prices get out of control, like over $100, that's probably something we'd want to talk about either temporarily.
That we potentially shove it in the trash cheaper? That would not help our environment.
Personally, I would just, I would change the strategy, and I'd tell multifamily places that no more recycling pickup. They're still putting plastic bags in it, they're not following the rules, I don't care. They can use dumpsters.
That one may be, maybe an offline discussion on how we got to that one, and how our degree of freedom is not super big on that.
Okay, that one I don't know if I would change the line item right now, personally. I was actually, when I first looked at it, I was like, can we reduce it?
And it doesn't sound like we can.
Well, we're on the subject of things that I forgot to talk about last week. Derek and Danielle reminded me there's a new state law that anything that ends up in a landfill in the state is subject to a $3.50 surcharge now. The good news is, there's an offsetting revenue dollar for dollar, so municipalities are going to be able to get reimbursed, but we have to pay the 3.50 out to whoever is taking our trash, Waste Management in this case, and then the state will take from them and reimburse municipalities. The idea is, I think, they're trying to put some of the onus on the non-New Hampshire municipalities or commercial vendors. They'll pay the 3.50, but they won't get the reimbursement.
Yeah, you know what's going to happen, yeah, then it'll be, well, we're going to give you 80% of it.
Yeah, we were talking about that at the Budget Committee, and I don't mean to belabor that point, but it would not be the first time that the state has not met its obligation to political subdivision.
That's what I'm saying, you know, now it's all, they're going to pay you back, and then next year, I'll, you know.
So you see an increase.
80% of it.
For this year anyway, as long as they withhold the first year, you'll see the increase in the expense line for that 3.50 per ton surcharge in the tipping fee line, is the one that's affected.
Yeah, that was another one of that.
And then you'll see the offsetting revenue when the revenue sheet's finished for solid waste, you'll see that 3.50 per ton back.
And so that one's increasing partially due to the tonnage increase, Adam, as well as the charge?
Yeah, all right.
The tonnage, so the quantity, I've kept the same, we've been hovering right around the same averages, but the contract amount per ton goes up halfway through the, or a quarter of the way through the year. So that goes from $76 a ton to 83 in April. So the tonnage is appropriated there for the different pricing. But yes, then we add 6,200 tons at 3.50 per ton for the state, and then we'll see that 21,000 revenue back. The other line that's impacted by that same surcharge is also the bulky waste, since a majority of the construction and demo debris ends up in a landfill as well. So my understanding is, the state hasn't really even figured this out yet, but my understanding is we will see a 3.50 surcharge starting January 1st for bulky waste and construction and demo, and same, same, the revenue back, so Danielle's increased for.
Okay. Richard, did you have any, here you wanted to?
I have a few lines, because there were some that I shared in my email. But there were, there were some recommended changes. One was both Town Hall and the Fire Department had put funds in for public health. The health officer is now in the Fire Department, so I'd recommend reducing the public health in Town Hall. That's a $750 savings. There was in the library, there was a small error in the library wages that needs to be corrected. That's about a $5,000 increase to the library wages. There were two police improvement expenses that were included, and that was my error. I was under the understanding that those were part of the Planning Board adopted matrix, but those had actually been pushed out. That was the parking lot in the locker room, so that'd be a $400,000 reduction. And then the library facility repairs I had put in as 38,000, or it was in fact 33,000. So if you were to make those four changes, that's a savings of just over 400,000.
And the police improvement was out of CIP?
That was out of CIP, yes. So you have one change in Town Hall, an increase to correct an error in library, and then two changes in CIP.
Do you want to vote on that, or?
That'd be helpful, yes.
I'll make a motion to accept these changes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Josh, seconded by Richard. Any questions, stand on, Jim?
Yes.
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 That definitely helps, Derek, thank you.
And then, you know, we were talking before, so of the big increase, most of it is in CIP or your special articles, and there's about a million in departments. You've got $119,000 in our benefits line, that's the rate increase for our benefits. $70,000 in property liability insurance. Adam talked about solid waste disposal, when you group all those together, that's about 130,000. And then I think the biggest change is because we went to a January 1st change for the wages, but we felt that that was the responsible thing to do because of pending legislation up at the state level.
How much of that, you know, how much that was?
That was about half a million dollars. So, I'm sorry, the total cost for the wage increases for non-union, and remember, non-union is half of our workforce. It's about 80 full-time equivalents, that's $500,000. So if you had only done July 1st, it would have been half of that.
250.
But again, this, at least this.
So that's $250,000, definitely, if we did that.
So, yeah, so explain how that works again, Derek, because like, I'm looking at the numbers and like, I think that's something that they're all going to hone in on. So we move it to January 1st.
Yes.
So everybody gets a step increase?
Yes.
Right?
Everybody that's eligible, there we do have, I can, I gotta pull up my notes from Danielle, but we do have probably a dozen or so employees that are at their max step and would not get an increase for a step. And it would also adjust the matrix by the CPI number in August.
And that's the core thing that I think is more fascinating to me, is that we're giving a 3%, and then we're basically, or 3.4% on average increase by moving that, and then you're going to increase it again by 3%.
Correct.
Right.
That's the proposal, yes.
And that I have some challenge with, because I think that, you know, when I do the math, some places it's 9% increase, other places it's 8.7. Like, I'm just going through some of these, like, the increase is there, and I think that's going to be a challenge with the Budget Committee. Because it increases all the other lines, right? FICA, Medicare, retirement, all those basically go up.
Yes, yes, those are, you have those associated lines. So just looking at the matrix adjustment, that has a cost of about $233,000. That 3.3%, we did, we did kind of split those out. The steps are about, you know, 267. So, you know, the steps is, it's about half of that, half million, so.
Because everybody got a step now, here in like June, correct?
July 1st.
So you already got a step now, you're going to give them a step again in, in January. I honestly don't think we should be doing the 3% matrix adjustment. Because they're already getting moved now in a very short period of time, as we go to January. And COLA right now, at least what I've read online is 3%, and we're basically moving on 3% with the step increase in January.
You wanted to do what, 2.?
So what we have done is, we've pegged what we did the last year as well. We looked at the August CPI for Northeast, and that was 3.3%. The board could cut that, they could reduce that amount. We have eight employees that are on the max step. So it's basically the idea of every job is got a beginning wage and an end wage. So for those employees, if you did only steps, they would have no increase in 2025. If you did the matrix adjustment, everyone would have the same exact, so.
Yeah, so here's my question about those individuals, and maybe we need to have an offline discussion about who they are. We should also be doing, like, planning and figuring out how they get to the next grade as well, if we're not doing that already, correct?
If those positions are available, potentially, yes, but some people may not be in the hierarchy, or they may be, you know, at a place where they've only got, you know, one supervisor above them, so.
Your position doesn't change labor grade.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, the only time is if you take a different job classification to move another labor grade.
Yeah, and I don't understand, how many total employees do we have?
Roughly 160.
And we're going to move the entire scale for eight people?
No, we're going to, we're going to remove, so what was proposed to move the scale was not just, was not for those eight people. It's to keep the matrix competitive with the market, to continue to move it. Because what we are seeing is other towns continuing to revise their wage matrix. Obviously, I shared the report with all the Select Board, it is, it does have that caveat in there. It says you should, on an annual basis, adjust your matrix if the budget supports it.
If the budget supports it.
Yes.
I'm really locked into this discussion, but I probably can do it back. Just didn't want to run off if you had anything else for me, thanks.
So are we just theoretically then accelerating a matrix adjustment that would have happened later?
It would have happened July 1st.
Okay.
You're given, you're given six months more than you would have of an increase, but then they don't get it again now for another year.
And the change that we're talking about then, more or less, is just that acceleration of the matrix adjustment. We're always going to do two, more or less two, 3% adjustments.
On average, 3.4% for every step?
Yep.
Right?
I think it's closer to three between steps.
Okay. Three, yeah, that was what I saw, but I think that like, there's, if you go through this step for each grade, it's roughly a 3-ish percent.
Yeah.
Right, for each step. But now what we're also talking about, so we're going to accelerate that, so it was July this year, you're now going to accelerate that to June, I mean to January. And then on top of it, you're now going to say, oh, we're going to go ahead and adjust the entire matrix all at the same time.
Yeah.
Which is why you're seeing the increase that you are on each one of the line items for the full-time wages.
Yeah, yeah, and I think I'm in alignment with you on this issue, yeah.
So the question would be, okay, I get that. Do we know how many of those eight individuals cannot be promoted in any way, shape, or form?
All of them, because again, there would have to be a vacant position for them to put in and be promoted to.
Okay.
And we have historically not gone off our planned matrix because of that, you know, that's why there's a.
My concern is, we're now shifting the entire, like, thing.
We shifted anyway, I just, we're shifting it from June to January.
No, the June to January I'm okay with. It's the additional additive on top of that at the same time.
What additive?
Because we're adjusting the entire matrix, right?
We do that every year.
But you're now going to do it in, you go ahead, Derek.
We have not done it, if you go over a long period, a longer period, if you go 10 or 15 years, we haven't done it every year. But again, because this was done, this study was done in 2023, implemented in 2024, we felt they were responsible to put the concept before you and put it in. The report was very clear, if the budget allows it, continue to move the matrix forward, referencing to some type of CPI, or at some point, if you do not do that on an annual or a frequent basis, we're going to be where we were five years ago, where you have some positions underpaid by 20-plus percent.
We had some positions when we were on the scale of, you know, 1 to 100, we had some people that were on the scale, were in the 20s. When we made the adjustment, we brought it up to 50?
60th percentile.
60th percentile. So we brought it up, so if you don't keep making the adjustment, they start sliding back down again.
Yeah.
And that's what, the reason why they have the matrix adjustment.
Yeah, okay, so.
So.
So, I mean, if that's, if that's the intent of you guys, of us, to let it slide back down again, and then have to, four or five years have to make the big adjustment again, because we weren't keeping up.
I want us to be competitive. I also want us to think about collectively how we're managing a whole bunch of things. And typically, in an organization, government or otherwise, you're going to increase people on the steps, people that are meeting expectations or are going above, correct? Out of 100 and how many?
60.
60. I don't think we had anybody that was below meeting expectations, which I think is statistically improbable.
Okay.
So I think that there's some issues around performance management, in my opinion, looking at the budget and going through that.
But you're not going to solve that tonight?
Not going to solve that tonight, but I'm saying it out loud.
I get it. But you're not talking, you're talking about 80, it's actually 80 people, isn't it, non-union?
Or non-union.
Yeah, 80 people are non-union.
And so are we saying if people are in the union, basically, they'll never be below meets?
They negotiate what they.
They negotiate, yeah.
Not the evaluation process.
The evaluation process should still exist.
But I would say what's different with the union contracts is I believe the three active contracts that we have this year have both step and matrix adjustment.
But that's, that was a contract.
That was a negotiated contract, those costs were approved by town voters, and they are in your default budget.
Okay. I'm just saying that all out loud, and I think that those things are going to come up as issues as we bring forward the budget.
And that's when you can negotiate with the Budget Committee, the Budget Committee comes in with one. We've had years where the Budget Committee's come in, and the Select Board come in with their own budget. Been a long time since that's happened, but we have done it. So where do you want to go from here?
I am okay taking what we have now and seeing what gets stripped out. My concerns right now, like, I'm glad that we did what we did on the fire operations and on assigned fund balance, I think that was appropriate. I think I agree with you, Peter, on the road, and I'm glad that Adam came back with a plan. I think we should see what happens with the budget on that, that's a good chunk of money. Derek found that we had 400,000, so that definitely decreases some of that as well. I think the largest pin in the, in the entire thing is going to be around the wages.
Notoriously, I haven't, we've never really, I can't think of anything that people have looked at and said, no, we're not paying that, because it's the system, it's just, they followed up, they followed it, you know? And if you follow this reasoning behind it, you can't fall behind, because then you end up doing what we had to do a couple of years ago, which costs a bunch. So if you maintain what you're doing.
Well, I get that. I did get to sit in for Richard, sitting at the Budget Committee the other day and listen to the school board. And I did see people starting to poke at where certain people's raises were. So I suspect that that will be a point of contention for some people this year.
I think, just to also state this out loud, I think that school administration is a little bit more of a political focus, where with a lot of this, we're talking about kind of routine, more like laborer type of people, getting a, first of all, accelerating the matrix adjustment, but then making that secondary adjustment to make sure that the whole matrix doesn't fall behind. So maybe I misunderstood your concern, Josh, sorry, but I. So maybe I misunderstood your concern, Josh, sorry, but I, I, maybe I'm not in alignment on, uh, with you on this. I, I do think that, um, the wages could end up causing people to question other expenses.
A hundred percent.
Yeah. I, 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 I understand what the point of this is.
If you don't, we end up like we did a few years ago, everybody, you know, in the 20 and 30 percentile, and we had to move them up, it cost us a lot of money to do that.
Yeah.
So, you know, and I mentioned the largest portion, Adam, you have, you have other items that are in here. I think justification of those items is gonna be extremely important. I think to all of the department heads, my comment is statistically improbable that we had nobody that was below meets.
I'll take one bullet for the rest of my. You're like, real long, can't flick a good booger, you know? I would just say, in my case, my department, sometimes you won't see an increase because we've let those people go in their probationary period or whatever, so. There's some of that that you don't get a chance to say, oh, there's nobody that's being recommended no raise because they're gone.
Okay, well, maybe those are some discussions we need to be having more frequently so we can stay.
So what's our bottom line number right now?
So what I have added in is I did add in the on-call stipends. Um, your, the, the vote regarding, um, the elected official stipends for supervisor to checklist moderators and assistant moderators, and then the correction of $400,000, uh, that, there is four different items there, as well as the use of unassigned fund balance for the fire. Um, your net collection of taxes is what I, I typically look at, but that's up about $3 million, which is still close to 15% over default.
Right.
I think last year, the board sent along a budget that was closer to 13%. For some reason, that number, um, sticks in my head, so it's, again, our, unfortunately, uh, we've gotten very good at predicting our revenues, but our revenues are, become stagnant. So, so it's, it's a little bit, um, bigger. Um, if the board does like, the only other thing we have to offer is, we did offer, you know, we do, I do have a budget report that is summed by object type, so those are the last five numbers, but then you're gonna see basically the same thing that I think Selectman Douglas already saw, where your, your full-time wages are a big part of it. But then, you know, there, there might be a little bit of benefit of looking at that if you wanted to get that number down before sending it to budget, or if you wanted to send it to budget committee and then simply respond to, to their actions.
We can negotiate with them, we've done that before.
So the bottom line number, though, that we would be sending to them, what would that be?
For the operating budget?
Yes, general fund total.
A total department head.
So not, not.
Yeah.
So not including special articles, I have $29,326,383. Now, it's gonna change by a few dollars on the on-call stipends, but, because I put in a round number of 73,000.
Yep.
Which I think it was 72 and change.
Okay.
Um, but you're, you're talking 29.3 million versus a default of 26.7. And then you've made it clear how you wanna act on the fire apparatus capital reserve fund.
I just, we don't have any choice on those, I think we needed to do that.
Well, you would still need to either wait or to give direction on the library capital reserve fund, and then just a reminder, you still do have one CBA article, uh, for DPW Teamsters that, that we're currently negotiating.
Correct. How much did we increase the wage scale last year, Derek, just a reminder?
I think it was 3.3%. It was, it happened to be the same CPI, August to August. So each, each percentage point is about $70,000.
Each percentage point is $70,000.
Yeah, of that, yeah.
Well, he's thinking, next week we're gonna have more information on this, right?
Yes. But that would be from your 2025 budget, but yes.
Can we have the money?
Yes, we're gonna try and get the answers to the questions that were raised tonight about the poll votes.
Right.
For next week.
I think the other items that are probably a risk are some of the vehicles, right?
That's always what they look at. That's why we had nothing last year in, in DPW, they, they got zero.
So should we take the hit and like take some of them out? Are there ones that we can remove? And I think that question really comes to like Adam and I think, um, the two chiefs, right? So.
So I, I'll speak for the police department. We've done three cruisers. I think that has continued in default and is, we, we argued quite a bit about that, um, last year, I think they were going to pull out one and I think we negotiated down from a Tahoe.
Down to a regular.
Down to a regular cruiser. So, so that, um, and then for all of DPWs, the, the vehicles you're seeing are the ones that were in last year's budget. He didn't add any new ones. These are all the ones that were cut from last year's, just a year older.
Sure, they're a year older. I guess the, the question is gonna be is like, what's been the detriment of us not replacing those so far, Adam?
So for me, um, the biggest one would be the curbside Packer truck. So you've seen the, we, uh, bi-weekly on the Action Matrix, how often at least one of the curbside trucks is out of service. So detriment there becomes, um, how quickly we have to get another truck either back online or, um, make the decision to send it out for diagnosis and repair versus have a little bit more time on our hands to work on it at the shop if we can prioritize. As they get older, our fleet maintenance budgets for solid waste have crept pretty steadily, um, and the delivery window for that particular type of vehicle is extremely long. So, um, not only is it already overdue, but now you're gonna add, it looks like 24 to 36 months is what's gonna be standard.
How old is that one now?
The last vehicle, or the first vehicle out is a 2012, so.
You put the, you, all you're doing is putting that off and you end up paying more for maintenance, and, and now it's taken so long to get this stuff, and not just those, even dump trucks have taken forever to get, I think, what, last time it was like 16 months or something, wasn't it, that?
Uh, yeah, even longer because of the rigmarole at the front end on the bidding thing, but yeah, yeah.
So then you're using, you're waiting 16 months, you've already put it off for two years, now you're waiting another 16 months. So now you're, you know, three years out, three and a half years out.
A lot of, with, with CIP for us, we have so much equipment that a lot of it is trying to flatten, you know, the annual spend, so if you're looking for non-mission critical, uh, things to strip, the first two sadly would be the smallest two, but, um, are, we have a message, a portable message trailer, variable message board, uh, which is one of four, um, that could be deferred again, and, uh, equipment trailer. So that'd be 50,000 between those two things, um, when we can.
It's still 50 grand.
We can.
You're better off letting them do that.
And why is that? I mean, I'm looking at both of you.
Well, because they're gonna look, they're gonna be looking for something.
Yeah, I mean, it, I think at that point, you know, stripping out 50,000 just to send along a budget that's 50,000 will always feel a little bit arbitrary, but I, I understand the point that you're making, I just think that it's probably better to let the, the budget committee haggle over it.
Why, that kind of feels like we're letting them do our job and.
No, I think it's.
Well, our job, our job is, was to support that, that stuff that needs to be done.
But it's also to look after the taxpayers and, and to my opinion, like, if that's something that we could strip out, then we should strip that out.
That's up to you to make the motion to do that. I won't support that, I think we need to, you need to have the stuff out there. If we strip it out, then they say, well, it really wasn't necessary.
Well, we didn't get any of it last year.
Exactly.
And, and I'd rather go with things that we believe absolutely we need. So, Adam on the curbside pickup, and Derek, and maybe you guys can figure out, how much did we spend in repairing that system this year?
Yeah, I mean, it's significant. Each truck.
Biggest complaint, this board get, three complaints we get, right? It's three. One's taxes.
Yeah.
Right? Two is streets, and three is trash. And I wouldn't say sometimes trash is one or two, it depends at the time of the season.
I agree.
When their trash doesn't get picked up, it's all over Facebook, it's on, they're calling you at home, they didn't pick up my trash, Pete, when they gonna pick up my trash? I gotta, Adam, when you gonna go, you know, it just, I, I don't think you eliminate the stuff that causes a problem. Roads, we had, we, look what happened.
Yeah.
Last year on the roads, and we had those people come in and they're up, they were all upset.
I agree with that. I think the roads we wanna keep in, I agree with the, the truck, I think we should be fighting for that, and I think Derek, when you go to the, or Derek.
It's okay.
Adam, Jesus, I'm getting tired. Um, sorry to both of you. Um, Adam, when you go, I think.
One of us should be here.
I, I think, I think you both should, like, be prepared and like, we, we should say how much we spent on that, cause we're spending that much money over two years and that could have gone to it, that should be an amount that we should be talking about, what we went with.
Which we, you know, to a degree, we do, um, it's.
But we spend the dollar amount, I mean, we all look at how much we're spending every week.
I think what we need to, I think one of the things they could look at, if you wanna look, is down report, it seems like we got a trash truck down all the time.
All the time.
And that should be something that should be shown to the budget.
Which I did give them last year, I, which you probably remember, is, you know, graphs too, where you can see very clearly, you get over a certain year and all of a sudden your cost per year spikes quite a bit, so. The, the information's there.
Sure.
They were looking for big ticket items last year and it was a big ticket.
Well, that's the easiest thing to do, when you're on the budget committee, I served there for 12 years myself. You wanna cut the budget, take something that's expensive, there you go, I'll cut the budget.
Yeah, yeah, cut the budget.
It's one vote instead of 20 littler votes, I guess.
But I, but I, I think that we should be making some progress here, and Adam, I appreciate your naming the two things. I'm gonna make a motion to reduce the budget by 50,000 on those two items.
Anybody? I'm gonna say the motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay.
Anything else? So you know our final numbers that we're gonna go to the budget, or is that 29 million number, or are you gonna have to refine it a little bit more?
29 million.
Thanks.
326.
Thanks, Adam.
383. Again, the only caveat is.
Adjust.
The on-call stipends is gonna shift up or down by less than 1,000. Um, and then you, you've been clear on the capital reserve fund for the fire apparatus. Do you want to take a motion and a vote on the library capital reserve fund at this time, or do you want?
That's the 50,000.
50,000, yes.
Somebody wants to make the motion, we could talk about it. Let's wait until we got other stuff that come up.
We will present that it was presented to you and you're still considering.
That's it, that's fine. Anything else? Is there a non-public?
I do not have any non-public this evening.
Motion?
To adjourn?
Second.
Motion. Roll call, Jim?
Yes.
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 Thank you all, sorry it took so long.